Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Joining everyone to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for December 9, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 6:36. Please stand up for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next is roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Aratafrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jettzer.
Here.
Alder Lattesay.
Here.
Alder Leffler.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Regstudd.
Here.
Motion carries. Or I'm sorry, you have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so next we move to item four. It's public appearances for non-agenda items, a new appointment. And tonight, we have a new appointment for the Parks Commission. So the new appointment is for Erin Adamani for the Park Commission. Her term will expire on April 2027, and this shortening the term due to a resignation. So Erin is online. So Erin, go ahead, and if you can introduce yourself and tell us why you want to be part of this commission.
Hi, I'm Erin Farrell Adamani, and I'm looking forward to being part of the Parks Commission. I've been a Pittsburgh resident now for over 20 years, and the parks have meant a lot to my family. And I just, you know, I think that I often hear that Pittsburgh doesn't have a downtown. We don't have our school district. And yet, it seems as though we have great parks, and I just want that to continue. And I'd love to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Any question comment for Erin? Dave, go ahead.
Erin, join the Parks. We feel like she'll add a lot. We're fortunate to find someone like her that wants to be a member.
Thank you. Any other comments, question?
Move approval of Erin Adamanti to the Park Commission?
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Erin Adamani to the Park Commission, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Erin, and welcome, okay? Thank you. Okay, so next we are going to move to a couple of public hearings. We have four in total. So I will open the public hearing on Resolution R-196-25 to discontinue and vacate a portion of Basswood Drive in the city of Fitchburg, Tann County, Wisconsin, pursuant of Section 66.1003-4 of the Wisconsin statutes. So, okay, anyone in the room that wants to speak on this public hearing? Here none. I am closing the public hearing. So next, we move to the second one. It's a public, I open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-024 adopting and recommending the full 2025 amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending Map 4.3 Future Land Use Plan Map and Text on Pages 4 to 17 to incorporate a new medium-high-density residential land use category. If anyone wants to speak on that item, okay, we have someone in the audience. Okay. So we have Dave Haidt. I don't know, you're in favor or against?
David Haidt, 5855 Woods Edge Road. And I'm against this. I'm against these comprehensive plan amendments because they don't follow the law. 6223 Wisconsin Planning and Zoning Law, Reddit. 661001 Wisconsin Comprehensive Plan, Reddit. The part where it says that we have issues in opportunities element, housing element, transportation element, utilities and community facilities element, agriculture, natural resources, cultural resources element, economic development element, intergovernmental cooperation element, land use element, implementation element. Plan Commission Handbook. UW Stevens Point, Center for Land Use Education, 215 pages. Everything you need to know about land use planning and land use law in Wisconsin, Reddit. Land Use Resource Guide. Guide to Preparing Land Use Element of a Comprehensive Plan, 136 pages, Reddit. Citizens' Guide to Mapping Future Land Use Mapping, 36, two pages, Reddit. Comprehensive Planning Development and Implementation Planning Toolkit, 68 pages, Reddit. Housing Wisconsin, Guide to Preparing the Housing Element of a Local Comprehensive Plan, Third Edition, Reddit. Transportation Planning, Wisconsin DOT, 83 pages, Reddit. Guide to Preparing Comprehensive Economic Development Element of a Comprehensive Plan, 55 pages, Reddit. Planning for Natural Resources in Comprehensive Plan, Wisconsin DNR. Was given a course here in 2006, Reddit. Integrating Environmental Issues into Local Land Use Planning Process, 136 pages. Comprehensive Planning and Citizen Participation, Wisconsin Department of Administration, 76 pages, Reddit. Planning for Agriculture in Wisconsin in Your Comprehensive Plan, 105 pages. What are we doing here? The Comprehensive Plan is supposed to have an analysis of each of these that is discussed directly by the Plan Commission and the impacts of the changes to the Comprehensive Plan as relates to the information in the Comprehensive Plan detail for each one of those elements. None of it exists in the Comprehensive Plan. None of it. The Comprehensive Plan is essentially nothing. That's why when it's asked of the Plan Commission, does this conflict with the Comprehensive Plan? It doesn't. And what's the basis of how we do comprehensive planning here? Thomas Hovell wrote out one paragraph sentence in 2008, seven. It said, "This is confusing. We don't know. I talked to my friends, and we're going to do it this way. We're not going to do anything that's in the law." There's no attorney opinion that allows for this to be done in the city. Nothing. That is the basis of this. And on that basis, I'm against this and any other comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I am closing the public hearing. So next, I am open the next public hearing on ordinance 2025-025 adopting and recommending the full 2025 amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending Map 4.3 Future Land Use Map for property located off of Fitcherona Road in Section 6, City of Fitchburg in Tann County, Wisconsin. So do you have another one for this one?
It should be enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Dave. I got five. Okay. Go ahead.
So I'm against this. So this is a specific instance, an example, of the issues that I'm talking about. Okay, so what we've got is we've got a plan. And the plan was developed according to some principles. I wasn't there, so I don't really know what they were. But the question is, is why alter it? And what are the criteria that are used to decide whether this is a proper alteration of the Comprehensive Plan? Now, the thing about a Comprehensive Plan is that it's defined in statute, but it's also defined in case law in the state of Wisconsin. The Wisconsin Supreme Court has weighed in on several occasions with regard to the Comprehensive Plan, and it says specifically two important things. Each of those elements that I talked about that are required by statute must have strong, supporting factual evidence in the Comprehensive Plan that allows for the analysis of the impact of the changes to the Comprehensive Plan on each of those elements. And then, once the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is changed, the Comprehensive Plan elements have to reflect, have to be changed and updated to reflect those changes. So every time that something happens in North Stoner Prairie, that means that the Comprehensive Plan, each of those elements have to reflect. Transportation, parks, open space, land use, housing. The master plan that's in 6223 is a singular document that's maintained by the Plan Commission. First of all, there is no singular document. We've got a bunch of amendments that are all over the place. And there's no way of bringing those in together and making sense of it in a comprehensive way. Second of all, none of the elements ever get updated as a result of the amendments that are made to the plan. So there just fundamentally isn't a Comprehensive Plan. The second thing that the courts say is that a Comprehensive Plan is just that. Now, for example, the neighborhood plans did not account for the systemic comprehensive impacts to all the different elements, housing, transportation, natural resources, community economic development, outside of the neighborhood. The Wisconsin Supreme Court says that is unlawful. A Comprehensive Plan is literally that. And my issue with this is the same as what I've just described. It's a small change to a small area, but if you aggregate the number of them, does anybody run a query over the agendas to find out how many of these alterations there have been to Comprehensive Plans? And how many acres? And how many traffic issues? I have. I've got it all in a computer. I can do that. I can see that there are these types of issues. But you can't, the Plan Commission can't. Something is fundamentally wrong here. This is not comprehensive planning at all. It's the opposite thereof. It's making changes with comprehensive planning being used as the cover for the changes, rather than the other way around. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. So I am closing public hearing on ordinance 2025-025. And next, I'm moving to item E. I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-0231, repealing the fire facility impact fee and creating the police facilities impact fee by repealing Section 44-146 and creating Section 10-20 of the City of Fitchburg General Code of Ordinance. Do we have anyone on the audience? Nope, so I am closing the public hearing. So next, we move to item five, is the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Any question, comment? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Start with some events of note. As a reminder, this Friday, December 12, Festive with Agora or Festive at Agora will be taking place just down the road here from City Hall from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Also, the Holiday Lights Tour will be, I guess the more formal event will be taking place this Saturday, December 13, at Fire Station Number One on Lacy Road. And there are just under 50 businesses and homes that have signed up to be on the tour, if you will. The applications for anyone's interested in submitting a name for consideration for the facility currently known as the hub at 2220 Traceway Drive are due no later than December 22 at 4:00 p.m. The application form is available on the homepage of the city's website. You might be surprised to know that the McKee Park ice rink has opened for the season. That certainly is early in the year, and the way it looks, it's going to be open for quite some time. Anyone who is considering running for local office here in the April election, as a reminder, nominations are due to the city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on January 6. And those papers can be obtained either from the city website or by coming into the city clerk's office directly to get those. Property tax bills will be placed in the mail on Thursday. We would anticipate that those will begin arriving in mailboxes as early as this weekend, but certainly early next week. In last council meetings, administrator's report, I covered some highlights related to the impact from the variety of taxing jurisdictions here in the community. With the holidays coming up, City Hall will be closed December 24, 25, and January 1 all day, and then after 12:00 noon on December 31. So if anybody is seeking to come to City Hall, please keep that in mind. Obviously, staff will be here taking tax payments up till noon on December 30. And then there's some additional information in the tax bill insert in regards to payment options. I also want to point out, this has previously been communicated to Common Council, but for members of the public and as a reminder to the Common Council, as a result of some restructuring being done at City Hall, one of the things that we are doing to increase staff efficiency and minimize distraction is closing public access to the third floor. That'll be effective Monday, January 5. We would encourage any members of the public, if they are wishing to reach anybody on the third floor, to reach out in advance and set something up to ensure that they are available if you are planning on stopping by. If you are a walk-in, we still can potentially accommodate a walk-in request. We would just ask that they visit the reception desk immediately upon entering City Hall, and the staff there will look to assist you the best or assist members of the public the best that they can. If anybody has any questions about that, by all means, please feel free to reach out. I also want to thank our Highway and Parks Maintenance Departments. We are early in January. We've had two rather notable snowfalls already, with the first one of the year being quite significant in relative terms of nearly a foot. I know that one also occurring on a holiday weekend added additional layers to this particular matter, but I do want to commend them for all of their efforts, as well as any other staff that has been out and about assisting the public during those weather events. And then finally, I do want to thank the Common Council, city staff, and all of our community members for all of the great accomplishments in 2025. I know Mayor Aratafrada is going to outline a number of those, but there certainly was a lot of things done over and above the day-to-day operations that our staff carries out every day. And I just want to publicly recognize that work by not only staff, but again, through the support and efforts of our Common Council here and community members who serve on committees, commissions, and boards, and in a variety of other capacities in our community. I do know that 2026 is shaping up to be just as busy, if probably not busier. We look forward to that, and I hope that you all, as well as city staff and any community members, have an enjoyable and ideally relaxing holiday season. Any questions for me? Yes.
I've noticed, this is the first year that the e-bikes are all sitting out in the snowbank, and the batteries, you know, they don't hold up well. And I assume, you know, we're going to be on the hook for replacing the batteries. What's the deal that they're all still sitting out yet?
So those collections, as well as the maintenance of the B-cycles, are all handled directly by B-cycle staff. The city does not have any staff involvement in regards to collecting or repositioning those bikes throughout the riding season. It was my understanding that they are anticipating getting those picked up rather soon. Typically, they run a little bit later.
September 15.
Thank you. In the year, because the snow doesn't typically impede the travel as it has this year. So as Alder Maldonado and Mayor Aratafrada point out, December 15 is the date, which they intend to have them all picked up.
Thank you.
Most of them have been removed. There are very few left. If you look at the map, you'll see zeros except in your neighborhood. Yes.
Okay. Any other question for child comment? No? Okay, so next, we move to the mayor's report. What I want to do is I want to share, I want to finish, this is the last meeting of the year, so I want to, I created, you know, a PowerPoint presentation to share to all the 2025 accomplishments. Okay, so, next one. So Fitchburg by the numbers. So we are ending the year with, we are 36,000 neighbors. Our operating budget was almost $42.4 million. Our equalized value, $6.7 billion. The meal rate was 5.42. It was a decrease of 6.4 from the previous year. The city tax average in a single-family home of $500,000 is about $2,077. And is equal to almost $228 per month. And the average single residential home is most, you know, is almost half a million dollars. It was an increase of almost 10% compared to the value in 2024. So employees, we are in total, full-time. We are 179 full-time employees. And then part-time, we are 77 employees, and we include the pay-on costs, hourly staff and seasonal staff, so for a total of 256 people. This year, we hired 15 full-time, but there were, some of them were retirement, you know, vacancies, you know, because we didn't hire, we didn't have new positions. Next one. Business data, this is year-to-date up to November. In 2025, we have almost kind of like a more than 20 business that came to Fitchburg, the most significant Revo Cuttings. You know, we had the Juniper Apartment, the Learning Experience Care, Grayford Heart Childcare, Art Up, the Pet Grooming, the Saferano Restaurante, Midwest Financial. And then we had two groundbreaking UW Health Rehab Hospital and Gigi's Playhouse. So I like this picture, so I created that slide. Yeah, we are investing in jobs and growths, okay? So next one. We will talk about our community service department. You know, we are going to start with the Fitchburg Library. This is year-to-date as October, because I didn't have the November monthly report. So you can see the metric, you know, the door count. We have more than 100,000 door count, the checkout, 249,000, overtried checkbooks, youth program, 308. Youth program attendees, that one was surprising for me, more than 8,000 people. Young people participated in our program outreach program, 33. Outreach program attendees, more than 1,0759. Meeting rooms reservation, 649. And also, the Fitchburg Library, they have the Friends of the Libraries and 4165, one of these three non-for-profit organizations. So the volunteers that they have, they are more teen volunteers, and they run 150 hours per year. If we move to the community, to the senior center. So the metric that I have here is the program. We serve 250 people per day. The senior that we serve in total year-to-date is 47,000. They have a new e-newsletter, and they have more than 1,800 subscribers. It was a 15% increase from the previous year. Case management, they serve 420 clients. Volunteer, they have 175 volunteer, okay? That's equivalent to 12,000 hours. Congregate meals, 7,211. And they delivered more than 9,000 meals. So that one is, you know, impressive. When we talk about infrastructure, okay? Because I received like, I know a complaint, but someone told me, "The city is not investing in infrastructure." Okay, I want to show you how we are investing in infrastructure, okay? So we started construction on our new police building that is infrastructure, is a $31 million. We are also building the East Water Tower that is going to cost around $4.5 million. We already started the design of the Fitcherona Reconstruction Road that is going to be the construction, what is next year. We are also investing in public transportation, working with Marisometron with a VRT. See, we continue with infrastructure and parks, you know. We open, parks are part of the infrastructure too. So we open, we build a new park, the North Stoner Prairie Park. We finished the hub on Tracey Way Drive. It was about $4.3 million. We added four new pickable courts and lights. Well, the lights, I don't think that they are coming because December is, yeah. Renovation, we have a tower here, shelter renovation, Chico Amido Tennis Court, McKee Park Siding, Rimrock New Playground, Soudell New Playground. And road reconstruction, we finished the South Zion Road. It was almost more than $12 million. This is what they told me. We also did the Fish Hatch intersection that, we did it with Tann County, it was a cost-sharing project. We resurfaced 2.75 miles, is almost equivalent at $2.2 million. I mentioned the starting. And we added more B-cycle stations. In total, we have 20 stations and 100 dogs. Trees, you know, I love my trees. So this year, we planted 100 nit trees in the H&amp;I areas, okay? Most of those trees, we got a grant to plant in that area. We also planted trees in the city street, Park and Terrace, 323. So in total, we planted 432 new trees in the city. Public safety. You know, we retired Drago, you know, and we welcomed Chico. Okay, so I don't have a picture of Chico here, so maybe Chico is going to get mad. Police call, October 31. Citizen generated, we, almost $10,075. It's a decrease of 8.4% compared to '24. An officer initiated, it was $12,244. It was an increase compared to last year. Fire calls, also there was an increase from the previous year. We had 2,089 and inspection, 1,836,000. EMS calls, 4,571 as October 31, and also was an increase from the previous year. When we go to the housing and permit issue, you know, so far as November 2025, we built 552 units. 71 single homes, I see we're coming short. We should be building more than 100 single-home families per year. This is something that I hope we can improve with the new land we are opening for next year. We included, if we include two-family homes, we have, we are 88, with a total of $41 million. And then we have six multifamily for a total of 462 units, and this is the new permit issue, so around $77 million so far. If we go to, continue to economic growth and development approved, we have plenty here. So you can see, we have Juniper, the location was the Hardtime Field. It was a 169 market-rate unit. It was completed in the summer. It's under construction, the second phase, for 185 units. Baumann Plaza in Fish Hatch Road is coming next year with 270 market rate and commercial space. Then in Central Park, Corey Frank developer, he built a 107 market-rate unit. It was completed in the summer. Jameson Quarry, also by Corey Frank, is a 276 market-rate unit there and under construction. The Lido Apartment, the council approved recently, is in Uptown Fitchburg. It's going to be 140 market rate plus the 10% workforce unit. It's under construction. Irish Fields is a 76 unit. 52 is multifamily, and 24 are rental townhomes is under construction. Then we had the Hardtime Fields Townhomes that were completed also in the summer, 51. Uphill Townhomes is that the 24 workforce unit. They are under construction. New Cam is coming with three buildings, in total of three or four units, market-rate unit. They already started with the construction of the first building. If we continue, we have JT Claim that is, is under consideration. It's on It's on Nevis Nesby Road, is a 100 market rate senior. I forgot to put the senior word here, and 80 unit affordable. The second Jamestown Quarry building that is going to be under consideration and if the council approved tonight, the amendment to the plan, it's going to be another 300 market rate unit. And then we have a couple of townhomes in Terre Bessa that they were developed by Sheri U. And then the Sesta development, we need to restart with the approval process. This is our senior that we don't know what is going to happen with that project right now. And then if we look at residential, single family. You know, Highland Reserve, we have 115 lots, that some of them there are under construction. The Ravaesa Phase Five opened recently with a 50 lot under construction. Fehe Field subdivision, we have 107 lot that they're now started. Oak Middle subdivision, 11 lots that they are under construction. Inspiration at Swan Creek, 57 lot under construction. And the other thing that is, we already approved a preliminary plot. Is a Noah's Ranch subdivision is coming with 166 parcel and 147 buildable lot. So if you look, we have a lot of thing in the pipeline for starting in 25 that is going to finish in 26, so a lot of projects are coming in 26 to finish completing 27. So if we look at the city taxes on the average home, if we look at this table, we can see that our taxes has been remaining, you know, in the last couple of five or six years, kind of flat adjusting by inflation. As you know, our, as I mentioned before, the average tax for the city portion for a $500,000 home will be 2,077. Is a 3.1 increase compared to 24 and in, is around $228 a month. That is taxpayer are paying for all the incredible service that we are providing. Policies that we implemented. We adopted the dark sky ordinance. We launched the housing initiative programs. We implemented Vision Zero. We implemented some zoning changes like high density urban district, the residential median density district. We reduced the lot size and we are allowed now to build accessory dueling unit in the city. We also drafted and signed the revised EMS contract. We have created and adopted two neighborhoods and plans and created the community and equity advisory committee. And we are currently working on a couple of plans. The bike and pedestrian plan. What is the other one?
Housing plan.
Housing plan, housing plan. Economic development and we need to finish the strategic plan. Oh, forest, oh yeah, so we have all this plan. Okay, oh my Lord, okay. So looking ahead for 26, okay, so what is happening in 26? As you know, we are, we are going to start with the revision of the comp plan and the zoning code. This is going to be maybe a two-year project that is going to be, you know, led by the planning department. We are going to continue to implement our housing initiative. We are working on how we're going to implement the down payment assistance and the other initiative. Continue work with the private and public project with Gorman. Exploring the EMS fire district with Oregon and Verona. Exploring the Oregon and Fitchburg industrial park. I don't know how to call that, I call it industrial park. Fitcherona reconstruction, we continue monitoring the construction of the police facility. And in parks, you know, we are going to replace the kid crossing. We are going to continue with Soudell, Swan Creek tennis court. We are going to install the inclusive playground shelter and we are going to do the Wildwood South tennis court. Okay, so the vision, this is my vision and I think the vision of most, I would say that you will share with me, this like make Fitchburg the leading suburban city by fostering a welcoming, inclusive and forward-thinking community where every resident has access to opportunity and every neighborhood is safe, healthy and thriving. And I think this is why I, I know that we all want to achieve this. Some of that we have different paths of how we're going to do it. But at the end of the day, we want to live in a city where it's safe, healthy and thriving. So that's it. This is my, my highlight for 2025 and I want to say thank you to all of you and to the staff because, you know, it take a village to do all of this. It was a busy year, we accomplished a lot, we should be proud for what we had done. And I want to say thank you to all of you for trusting in my leadership and, you know, and also want to say thank you to the city because I always say that city staff are the engine of this organization. So what else? I have another one before I forget. And also want to say that I went to the staff lunch last week. I think a couple of other, Micah and Joe also came and it was a great opportunity to thank all our staff. It was a great, you know, event. So I want to say thank you to Sarah and her team in the HR department because they put together that event and it was great to share with, with all of you. So, and also I want to say thank you to the public works department that have been working a long hours to keep our roads safe. So I want to say thank you to them too. That's it, any question for me?
I have one question. Anybody have a birthday coming up?
A couple of people.
Just, just in case. There's a cake over there. So this might be a long meeting, so we're going to have a cake break later.
It's my birthday this week, is your birthday too? Is Gabriela too? Who else?
Raise your hand if you got a birthday in December. It's isolated to District Two.
Can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Okay, thank you. And then we move to commission and committee, committee's report and we will start with Plan Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with the ordinances. I move approval of ordinance 2025-024 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0425, adopting and recommending the Fall 2025 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, amending map 4.3 Future Land Use Plan map and text on pages four through seven, 417 to incorporate a new medium-high-density residential MDHR, no, MHDR land use category and amend the text on page 417 of that plan for the high-density residential HDR Future Land Use category.
Okay.
As amended by Plan Commission.
Thank you. So you're going to?
Yes, so this, just a history for the people that are newer. This was something we attempted to do, I believe, last year.
Yeah.
And what ended happened, up happening was the Plan Commission and the council passed different versions of the resolution. That is probably not allowed to happen by law. So we changed our policy so that the Plan Commission and the council have to agree in order for a policy to be passed. And then had to bring this back because although it did technically pass council because the same resolution did not pass Plan Commission, it was never implemented. So the medium-high-density residential land use category, the idea behind it is that create something in the middle between, the problem is that you have low density and medium density and then when you jump to high density, it's just nine units per acre to infinity and beyond. So for residents that are trying to understand what high-density residential might mean in their neighborhood, they, there's no like understanding of what that could mean. It could be a townhouse, it could be a very small single-family home or it could be a 500-unit apartment building. So the idea was to create an in-between land use category that was more targeted towards middle, middle missing housing. So that's kind of twoplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, denser housing without it being super high density, although sometimes you can get into higher density sometimes, but really that's, that's kind of what the target for this type of land use category is. And the reason I passed it, I moved as amended by Plan Commission was so that we could align our resolutions. It, the original proposal was for nine to 20, meaning nine to 20 units per acre for, but the Plan Commission was more comfortable with nine to 15. That was actually what was originally proposed last year. It aligns with the T4 transect in SMART code to have the nine to 15, which is why that those numbers were chosen. Deanna did talk about how at, at Plan Commission, 15 to 20 is actually a pretty rare land use category, like there's not a ton that's in that category. So nine to 15 would encompass most of what we would consider medium-high-density or, or middle, missing middle housing. So I'm happy to answer any questions about what the Plan Commission discussed. Anything to add, Mayor, about that discussion?
No, that I think if people feel like for the nine to 20, we can have that conversation when we do the comp plan.
I don't think 15 is high enough. I mean, the, the graphic that's used in there is from Opticos Design. And if you Google for Opticos Missing Middle, you run across a slide deck where they themselves say the missing middle goes up to 40 dwelling units per acre and that you need across every city block, an average of at least 16 in order to support transit and neighborhood retail and other service amenities. And I feel like that is a worthy goal for our medium-high-density residential zoning.
Okay, any other question, comments? Yes.
What, there is a question for Deanna. What does 15 look like and what does 20 look like in practice? What would something, something designed that way look like?
We don't have too much that is going to get us right around into 20. What would the 15 is going to look like? Some of the, the townhomes in Terre Bessa is, those are going to be just under 15. So like when you have a row of townhomes, townhomes, that will get you just under 15.
Any other question? I know that your point is valid, Bill, but may we can discuss that during the comp plan?
I would just say that if we do not pass this, if we do not pass this the same as the Plan Commission, there is no medium-high-density.
Yes, absolutely.
There is none. It just either is this or it's not. We have to agree or it doesn't exist, so.
And we, we wasted a year. I, I, I get from where you're coming, Bill. Any other question, comment? No? Okay, so all those in favor, ordinance 2025-024 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0425, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed by Alder Jetser and the motion carries. Okay, so next one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025-025 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0525, adopting and recommending the Fall 2025 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, amending map 4.3 Future Land Use Plan map for property located off Fitcherona Road in Section 6, City of Fitchburg in Dane County, Wisconsin, out lot three of Jamestown Quarry from MDR Medium Density Residential to HDR High Density Residential. Plan Commission did approve this.
Okay, thank you.
Take a second.
One second. Okay, first before we go, can we, I have two people that want to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have Chris Townsend and Corey Frank. They are online. Are they available for question? Chris and Corey?
I have a question for them.
Good evening, everybody. This is one of the many iterations of the Jamestown Quarry development. And it has kind of evolved into a product that makes a lot of sense to have a high-density residential product. What has come before you previously showed two potential options for this area. One being a big box store with a gas station convenience store kind of within that same parcel or a mix of retail and housing. And when these two options were brought to the neighborhood during a neighborhood meeting, the strong preference was to have a significant buffer, the partner conservancy buffer, environmental buffer between the single-family homes to the north and a residential product. And we did bring a high-density residential product to that conversation. The neighborhood had a consensus approval that that was their preferred option. I do want to point out that while it would be a high-density residential land use that immediately backs up to single-family homes, this is a unique situation in many regards. But considering the previous use of this land was a quarry, there is quite an elevation difference to make up here. And when all is said and done, the grading plan for this high-density residential site would really had, in a worst-case scenario, would have up to two stories that are viewable from the single-family homes. And a good portion of those homes would actually be fully screened and not even see the apartment building itself. This is just due to, again, the elevation by nature of a quarry and the additional screening and earth and burn plans that we have for this area, trying to be very conscious of the neighbors to the north there.
Okay, thank you. So we have a question. Okay, David.
Chris and Corey, did you reevaluate, you know, the, the Texas wraps are pretty massive. Have you reevaluated effects on stormwater? You know, I know you have to retain it all up there, but this is a quite a bit different. You know, these are pretty massive structures. I'm just curious if that's been looked at.
Yeah, so, so stormwater gets heavily scrutinized and, and looked at prior to any, any permitting can take place. And we've already started the, the initial look into the options for stormwater for this Phase Two of Jamestown Quarry, which would be a retail building and second multifamily building. I guess just to further reiterate, no permits would get approved without a stormwater plan in place that takes care of all stormwater on site. So there's no concern for neighboring properties. It's something that gets highly scrutinized and looked at all the way up until the final permits are given. And as far as specifics as to how that'll be implemented to this site, we've looked at a couple of options. One being potentially joint stormwater between the two uses. The other being stormwater or separate stormwater facilities. The retail located at the west end of the retail site and the multifamily located at the northeast corner of the parcel. The benefit in sharing stormwater facilities is that it would then allow for some green space at the northeast corner that could potentially provide for some nice outdoor amenity space to be utilized by the tenants of both the Phase One and Phase Two apartment buildings.
Thank you.
And I should also note that the, you brought up the Texas wrap style. This, this is in the early stages, of course, just the comp plan, minor comp plan amendment. So we still need to go through CDP, GIP and SIP. So this isn't to say that the Texas Wrap building is for sure what will be built there in the future. That is the route we're looking to go. And there are major stormwater benefits with this style building. With the four-story parking structure, it significantly reduces the impervious surface and the surface parking lot spaces, which is a major benefit as far as stormwater impact as well.
Okay.
All right, so to orient you on this, what we're looking at here. So this is a minor comp plan amendment. So this is a future land use designation for this area. This is the Jamestown Quarry, so that's Fitcherona and Mackey, where there's those four retail. is the Jamestown Quarry, so that's Fitchrona and McKee, where there's those four retail going in right now, Argus Soon, the Chick-fil-A, the McDonald's, the Chase, and the Car Wash. Behind that is space for commercial, and then behind that is potentially residential. There is some flexibility. When the developer brought this before us many times, we talked about how much housing was important to us. And Corey Frank's team did, is doing the Texas Wrap behind the Wingborough Quarry site that's active, that's kind of under construction right now. So when they're looking at those other sites, medium-density residential is currently what's there. Medium-density is not really financially feasible, like they won't build townhomes here. It just doesn't make sense from a financial perspective. So then you're looking at doing fully commercial or you're looking at doing commercial and high-density residential. Like those are the two really economically feasible options. The high-density residential, again, this proposal that we've talked about, this is just theoretical, right? This is just future land use. Anything could go here that's in high-density residential category, but we're using this as an example of what would likely go in there, talking around 300 market rate units. And again, because of, if you've seen that site, there's so much dirt all over the place. And so it actually, the building would be set down much lower than the single-family homes behind it. We also had quite a discussion at Plan Commission as well, where it's unusual to put something so high-density next to single-family homes, low-density, but because like your choice is really like the back of a commercial building or, or, or looking at apartments, like that's kind of, there's going to be a demarcation regardless, and that high-density residential building is going to be set down much lower. And actually, not a ton of it's going to be visible to the, so it's not like a towering building next to a single-family home. And there will be a buffer as well. Let's see. Yeah, there will be a significant berm in front of it to block it. And I think that's where the, anyway, the Plan Commission did pass it unanimous in the end.
Okay. Deanna, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm just here if there are any questions or concerns.
Okay. Questions, concern, Logan?
I was just going to make one comment. Corey, I liked when you were describing kind of that shared stormwater vision. If we're going to have 500 or 600 units here, I think it'd be great to have some kind of shared green space. And if there's two stormwater ponds, that may not be as possible. And I was just looking at our parks map, and there's no playground publicly around for a couple of blocks in that area. So if there's a way to make that happen, I think that would be a great, a great idea as you look into the future phases, the GIP and SIP.
Yep. Yeah, appreciate the comment and noted. And we definitely are keeping that mind and hoping to be able to have a green space that can be utilized for the, obviously, large amount of future residents in the area. Is, in terms of private versus public, our initial feedback we received from, from the Parks Department is that the space is too small to dedicate as public parkland. We're still open to that, but if that is the case, we're, we're moving towards looking to implement private outdoor space that can be utilized by those residents of the two apartment buildings.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comment? I think the other thing that about bringing the density in that area is we have the public transportation. We have all the stores, you know, people can walk across the road, go to the supermarket. We have banks, you know what I mean? I think it's a, it's a good approach to bring that type of density to that area. It will look at the whole area. Any other question, comments? Okay, here none. All those in favor, ordinance 2025-0-25, Plan Commission Resolution PCR-05-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So next one, Gabriela.
I'll move approval of Resolution R23425, approving preliminary plat request PP 261825 by Michelle Burse, Agent for No Oaks Ranch LLC, to approve a preliminary plat to create 168 parcels, including 141 buildable lots on property north of Lacy Road and west of Highway 14.
Second.
Plan Commission approved.
Okay, thank you. Before we move, I have David Haid, who wishes to speak in opposition of this. And then Phil Spium, he's online. Okay, here is Tracy.
David Haid, 5855, with a drone. I'm against this, but let me just say that we've just observed a couple of extremely disturbing developments here with regard to the legal correctness of the proceedings. So when you pass an ordinance like this, council did, with a medium-high density, it comes with the strong presumption of constitutionality by the Wisconsin Supreme Court. It was passed. It was in effect. You don't go, oh, well, you know, we think we've got a problem here. Where's the attorney? Where's the written opinion? Where is she on these things? Her job, as written, is to take care of the legal business of the city. That's legal business of the city. Her job, according to the Supreme Court rules which govern her, she's an officer of the court, to come to, if necessary, the council and warn the council of things that may affect the significant interests of the city. You would think that having a mix-up about what ordinance is in effect, what isn't, whether the Plan Commission is or isn't, that that's something that would be in writing. It's not. That's craziness. Would any of you go to, and a lawyer, have a lawyer sitting there, and when you have a discussion of this, that there is no lawyer, there's no written document? And it was wrong. It's wrong. You passed an ordinance. It's the law. Second, with regard to the public hearing, the proposal for the change in the comprehensive plan was put forth by the plan staff. The plan staff is the one who speaks to it. The developer has no more right to speak than I do. There's no property right associated with the comprehensive plan amendment. The proper way to do this is the plan staff proposes and discusses, and the developer gets his three minutes like I do. You're violating my constitutional rights. I'm being discriminated against based on what? You better have a good reason for discriminating, putting me in a different class than the developer. And here, with regard to this, it's yet the same. Again, you have 24-25B sets. You must, to approve this, have evidence before you to adjudicate whether all the rules of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources with regard to floodplains and wetlands are complied with before you may approve. You have no such evidence. In fact, you don't even have any evidence that NR 103 or any other state statute is implicated, because there's no guidance from the city attorney. This is an evidentiary hearing. This isn't legislative discretion. It's a completely different aspect. Again, it's right here in the Plan Commission handbook, 216 pages. Where is the guidance?
Your time is out.
From the city attorney on these things.
Your time is out. Thank you. So, okay.
Should I give a summary?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's another.
Phil, okay, Phil, go ahead.
I have remarks, unless there's some questions.
Oh, so you are all, okay, okay. So if we have a question, we can ask you. Okay, good. Okay. So go ahead, Gabriela. And Deanna.
Deanna, I may call on you in case I miss anything. This is a preliminary plat, so this is the first step in this development. There will be many more steps to come. This is residential subdivision. The, what is going to be contained in this residential subdivision are 79 single-family lots alley-loaded, smart code T4 zoning, 44 single-family lots, also T4, and 23 mixed-use lots, smart code T5. And then a bunch of different outlots for civic use, open space, stormwater management, environmental corridors, and parkland, and some outlots for private use as well, and alley space as well. And then there was a tree survey done as required by our tree ordinance. They identified, how many trees was it? 216 desirable trees, most of which were in the outlots that were already identified as potential parkland or open space. 15 desirable trees would be removed total for grading and roadways. And then there are some things in this initial preliminary plat that is a little bit off from smart code, and this is in anticipation of city staff making some changes to smart code that's coming soon. So they asked for a condition approval, knowing that those changes are forthcoming. Things like not requiring, what do you call it? Some smart code requires tree wells, you know, like the metal grates with the tree, which is not, which is both very expensive and not necessarily required for certain neighborhoods like this. So that's an example of one of those things. And the rest of it is listed in the, in the memo. Anything that you'd like to add, Deanna?
Yeah, I would just like to say, this is one of our three smart code neighborhoods. So the look and feel of much of this neighborhood, when it does build out, will be very similar to Terre Vessa. What's a little bit different from Terre Vessa is that this neighborhood is a smart code transit-orienteded development. So that means that it shifts a little bit more into the higher densities as in comparison to Terre Vessa. So you'll see much more of that T5 zone, which is a mixed-use zone that does not have an upper limit on the dwelling units per acre, and allows quite a bit of opportunity for different styles of development, everything from mixed-use, high-density residential to more of the middle housing, depending on how the developer brings forward the next projects. That, Alder Gerhart mentioned that there's some smart code changes. Staff has already proposed those smart code changes. They were included on the referral agenda. Happy to work through that in the next month or so. So, and I'll take any questions.
Dave, did you discuss this in Park Commission?
We did. And I'll just, we reviewed the open spaces, you know, parkland, and we had a discussion. We feel the north, the north area that's kind of separated by the, by the creek or the drainage way that goes through there, that that might be a good place for an oak savanna. We discussed that. And I'd also like to point out on the, I guess it'd be the south, southeast corner, by the railroad tracks, there's a potential site for, you know, a transit, a transit spot. And then on the, on the south, kind of envisioned would be the, kind of the neighbor, the urban, urban park area. So there were three different, three different, you know, things set aside.
We have some technical difficulty to upload the picture, but, okay. Any question for Deanna? We have Logan and Micah. Oh, who is, and Dave?
Okay.
All right. Let me pull up my list here. While I'm doing that, I'm overall excited to see this, this project and this development moving forward as we look at trying to get more commercial uses and realizing the vision that has been laid out for Uptown and this whole eastern side of the city. This is the next logical step in that. I think when I've been talking to folks in the Swan Creek and elsewhere, I think one of the biggest concerns has been some of the traffic impacts that we've seen from Sine Road being under construction this year. There's already a lot of impact on Central Park Place. I see that one of the conditions is updating the traffic impact analysis. So I just, I guess this is more of a comment, maybe a question. I talked to Ross, our transportation engineer, about this yesterday, and it sounds like this will be pretty encompassing of not just within the boundaries here, but also like Lacy and Central Park and Lacy and 14, where there's already some concerns from folks in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to make sure that was indeed the case. And if I'm missing anything as far as the scope of that traffic impact, traffic impact analysis?
You're right. I'd have to defer to Ross for the specifics of what's included.
Okay. And then the next question I had was about phasing. Phil, I know we've chatted about this a couple of times over the last few months. I was just curious if you have any update on phasing, as far as where you think you may start. And also, just even kind of ballpark, is this a five-year, is this a 10-year, is this a 20-year fully-realized vision?
Start off of the roundabout, off of Central Park Place, and go north, Central Park Place, as it goes to the west. And then it's kind of yet to be determined after the first few phases, primarily on the south area, south end of No Oaks Ranch, and then we'll move corner, and then also to the other.
Phil, you're cutting in and out.
How's that?
Better.
Better.
Better? Okay, sorry about that. Well, it's going to, the, the No Oaks Ranch area will start on the south end, along Lacy and, and Central Park Place, and then move probably to the, along the tracks, and then also to the other side of the Greenway, towards the northeast side to where Dale Osborne's ownership is. So the, the, you know, some of it's based on the marketplace, what that will help us determine. But to answer your question about the timing, I really would, it's hard, it's hard to determine that right now. But I've always kind of looked at it as maybe an eight-to-nine-year project. I mean, Terre Vessa started in 2018. We are completing the last phase over the next two years. So 20, 2027. So that's, you know, nine years and a lot, a lot of acreage. So I don't think it's unreasonable to say inside of eight, eight or nine years for this as well.
Thank you. And then I was just going to also make one quick comment as well. I appreciated, it looks like the plat was adjusted at one point based on the tree survey to protect a number of the high-quality trees on kind of the northern property edge, on the west side of the kind of creek.
Yes.
Which I thought was a really, really nice benefit to the community as we try to protect our trees. And that's not something that can be regrown very quickly. A lot of nice trees out there. So I just wanted to say I appreciated the adjustment to protect those additional trees there.
We were kind of surprised that there were that significant number of good trees in that location. But as Deanna mentioned, we, we did the survey, and we were, you know, we're happy that the city wants to, to accept them, frankly. So we'll, we'll go through that whole process in dedicating the parkland, most likely with this first phase.
Okay, thank you. Micah?
Can I want to mention one other thing?
Yes.
I know the traffic analysis was mentioned. That has already been started.
Thank you.
When we say future transit station, what are we referring to?
Train.
Trains?
[laughing]
Okay. I would echo Logan's comments on the tree preservation. I really appreciate that. And I just will make a comment that I really like the design of the kind of park plus environmental plus stormwater corridor that runs through here. I think that has a lot of potential. I think there's a lot of opportunity there to design something that will be really great for the residents of this area and for Uptown. And so I just, as we go forward, I'm excited to see kind of how that will develop into something that is, is usable. So that's, I think it looks really good.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, Phil, could you, you were cutting in and out. Could you reiterate, or did you say development was going to start on the south? Could you reiterate, did you say development was gonna start on the south and work its way north? I'm glad to hear that, to see the T5 going in before the T4. Because the, you know, the documentation we had here didn't really say much about the T5 and what the overall vision was going to be. I did have some questions, though, on the T4, which is supposed to be a mix of uses, a wide range of building types. And should, you know, prioritize pedestrians over bikers, over transit, over cars. And I'm just, it looks like it's all single-family homes. Probably everybody there is gonna have two cars in the garage. And that kind of goes against the spirit of, of smart code and T4. Do you have any comments on that?
Well, a lot of our T4 over in Terre Vessa turned out to be a lot of twin homes, twin, duplex townhouse style. It's worked out really well and especially hitting the more affordable type of housing for people to purchase. I suspect you'll see a fair amount of that and single-family homes as well, alleyway as well as front-loaded garages. It's, you know, part of this is market-driven. So I think that a lot of this is still being in, more or less in design. You know, Corey Frank is gonna be doing some, some projects over there, I believe, and some others as well that we've worked in the past with folks over in Terre Vessa that understand smart code, understand all of the setback requirements and everything else. It's not an easy code to, to work with. So I think that those that have worked in it in the past, it's a, it's a strong advantage for the city as well as us as creating this neighborhood to work with those folks that understand the code itself. Because it, the product that ends up is, is better. And there's a lot, and knowing the ground rules is, is, makes it much easier for that type of development to take place.
I have a question about stormwater because I think at one point we discussed to have the regional pond, then we decided not to do that. So can you explain, you know, the stormwater system in that, in this neighborhood?
Well, I probably can't explain it as an engineer would, Mayor, but I think it's, we did a lot of stuff on this to see what could be accomplished. And the plans that we have and is going through engineering at City Hall reflects the fact that we can maintain detention and infiltration on No Oaks property without utilizing the lands to the north. We also are working with Avante on part of their property that is within this neighborhood to help taking on some of their stormwater. And we were able to accomplish that with our existing stormwater management plan with infiltration as well as detention.
Any other question, comment? Do you want to add anything else, Deanna?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Sounds very thorough.
Okay, so, so this is the preliminary plat, you know, so it's phase kind of one of the process. So a lot of things coming, needs to come to us. So all those in favor of resolution R-234-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry, Joe. The motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Phil.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so next we move to, oh, do you want to add anything? No, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, we meet next week.
Okay, thank you. So next we move to the board of public works.
So I move approval of resolution R-19125, accepting public water main easement on Bud's Drive.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
With the street being, street being reconfigured and kind of closed off, we need a, an easement for our, for our public water main across this, across this area.
Any question, comment? Nope, okay. All those in favor of resolution R-191-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Excellent. Move approval of resolution R-19625, resolution to discontinue and vacate a portion of Basswood Drive in the city of Pittsburgh, Dade County, Wisconsin pursuant to section 66, 1003, subclause four of the Wisconsin statutes.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Plan Commission approved.
What is this?
Again, we're closing, closing the street off, changing, changing, it won't be a through, through street anymore. And so that's what this is. That is what this resolution is about.
We are moving, what is, the cul-de-sac 90 feet to the west. So it's gonna be now a subzero. Yeah.
You are correct, Madam Mayor.
Any question, comment? This is more like administrative? All those in favor of resolution R-196-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R-23825, authorizing rejection of police services facility, audio/video bid.
Second.
Just for clarification, it's R-22825.
R-22825, yeah. Need glasses. Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
So this, this came in, as you heard, at finance at twice what, twice what the engineers estimate. And we only had one bidder, so we would like to bid this again at another time, hopefully get more, more bids and a better price.
Any question, comment?
Tim, did you want to add anything?
I don't have anything else to add. If you guys have any further questions, I can answer them.
Is this one for the new police facility, isn't it?
That is correct.
Okay. And do we think that we are gonna get a better price if we?
We are hopeful.
We hope?
We're very hopeful.
I'm not sure it could be worse.
Yeah, yeah. Good point, Joe.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of resolution R-228-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one.
Next, I move postponement of resolution R-23125 for amendment for final sidewalk assignment to a, a date, date uncertain.
Second.
Okay, so we are postponing this to when or indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of postponing indefinitely resolution R-231-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of resolution R-23525, supporting the STBG-TA grant application for traceway and post-road path.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
What about the bicycle and pedestrian commission? Approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What is this, Dave?
This is a, make a request, you know, for grant to improve that path, you know, basically connecting post-road down to the traceway, you know, at the hub. And also there's a section, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's included here. There's about a section, we'd like to get tied into Cannonball Path, but there's about a block through Madison yet. I don't, I don't know if that's included in the, in this, but basically post-road down the traceway.
So, oh, Joe, go ahead.
My understanding is that staff has been in touch with city of Madison with the expressed desire to close up that 100 or so feet of the Madison path. Correct, Tim? Yes, that is correct. Ross has reached out to the city of Madison and they are on board to construct that at, once this project moves forward. Just, just a technical note, Dave, if you bring the mic a little bit closer to your mouth, it's kind of hard to hear you as well when you speak.
Thank you, Joe. Sorry.
Okay, so, so this one is we are applying for the grant or we already got the plant, the grant?
Nope, just applying.
We are applying?
Well, this is, this is a resolution showing support for the grant. The MPO Policy Board has approved federal funding, $760,000 in federal funding. There'll be about a $500,000 local match. But in order to, to get the federal funds.
Oh, we need to have.
We should have a resolution and support.
Okay. Any other question, comment? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-235-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one. We move to park commission.
Move approval of resolution R-21325, amending the 2025 TID closure excess increment fund budget for the Wildwood South tennis courts.
Second.
Parks approved.
Finance approved.
So we need two third here, okay?
So we'll be, you know, clean out the cracks, sealing, and then resurfacing and then putting a new acrylic, acrylic surface over the top. And Bill, do you remember, it was 47,000, that's how I'm reading, for this, for this work on this tennis court?
Okay, so I received, I received a comment from Patrick Cheney. He, he said that I need to read this comment, okay? So I support and agree with effort to repair and maintain our park facilities and amenities. I prefer this rather than the decision to demolish and to replace existing features. The next tennis court to resurface should be the Maggo Park Tennis Pickable Archery Court instead of, instead of an intended current idea of demolishing and removing, leaving nothing but an empty hole. This needs more discussion. Yes, I am watching this meeting live. Okay, thank you, Patrick, for watching. I am reading your comment. Okay, what else? That's it?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, so any comment for the people in District Four, this is your tennis court? No?
No, I mean, I've heard that there are cracks forming in this, so I'm glad we're doing it and getting ahead of it. Maintenance is always cheaper than replacement later, so.
Okay, so all those in favor? Oh, I need two thirds, so we need to do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Lotusay.
Aye.
Alder Lopper.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else from parks? David?
No, no.
No? Okay, so then we move to the library board.
Our December meeting is canceled. We will see you in January.
Thank you. Commission on aging well?
No report at this time.
Resource conservation commission?
No December meeting. We will meet next on January 12th.
Wow. Transportation and Transit Commission.
Our December meeting is canceled. We'll see you in January.
Okay. Community and Economic Development Authority? I watched the meeting, so. Seven o'clock.
I don't have any report.
No?
There, there was a lot that happened, but I'm not gonna summarize it all.
Yeah, I, I, okay, I watched the meeting and it was a presentation of the first draft of the housing plan. And I will recommend you to, in your spare time in December, if you can read that. So because there is good information in that housing plan, some good recommendation. So, or you can watch the meeting or you can read the plan. It's, the plan is not too long. I think it's 20 pages long. I will recommend you to, to do that. Okay. What is, Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
Our December meeting was canceled. We will see you in January.
Okay. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
So we had a discussion about the bike and pedestrian plan. There was an interest for, from some members of doing some pretty significant revisions, but just because of the limitations by our, the cost of our consultant, we kind of had to make a compromise. So we want to make sure that, one, the Bike Commission, Bike and Pedestrian Commission is the last commission to view it. And there are a couple of committees and commissions that are gonna review it before that, so that, I think that would push the approval back one meeting. So we'll keep you posted on the details of that.
So do you have any idea when this plan is gonna be finalized?
The hope would be the end of January. So we want to be able to have a special bike and ped commission meeting in January. They're usually in February.
Okay.
So the commission did agree to that. So that is the hope. Phil also is gonna work on some, there were actually some kind of technical and grammatical errors in the report that the commission caught. So there is some things that staff needs to review, but then there are a few specific kind of questions and issues that folks wanted to discuss in another meeting. And they wanted to be able to hear, I think, Public Works and Community Equity Committees' comments prior to doing a last review.
Okay, thank you. Okay, EMS Commission.
We have met since last council meeting.
Okay. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
We are meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Housing Advisory Committee?
Oh, no reports, but they were invited to the CDA meeting.
Yeah. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No me, uh, no report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
I have a report. So we reviewed the urban forestry management plan draft. We just had it kind of up on the screen and then we were emailed a copy afterward. So the committee's gonna review and discuss that at the January meeting, after they have a chance to review the hard copy. And then we'd expect it to be referred out after that to other committees. The other thing is we are taking down 115 ash trees over the winter on city terraces. The good news is that funds are available to replace all of them. I did ask Anna, Anna, and she said that if residents have a tree in front of their house and they have like a specific type of replacement tree, if it's within reason, if it's within the things that we normally plant, they can let us know and we can try to accommodate putting a replacement tree that they'd prefer, so.
But we don't remove the trees, isn't it?
Uh, we do.
Oh, really?
So these are city trees on the city, on the terraces.
Ah, city trees. Ah, but not private ones.
No private trees. We don't do trees.
Yeah, no private, no private trees.
Nope.
It's very expensive. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Community and Equity Committee?
Our first meeting will be, or sorry, our second meeting will be next Monday at 5:15.
Thank you. Report from other commission and committees? Yeah.
The MPO Policy Board met on December 3rd. We had a discussion, given all the talk of no fare buses in New York City, and there was an article in the New York Times about Iowa City removing fares from their bus system. So there, we had a discussion about that and it would, we'd have to find somewhere between eight and 18 million dollars to make up for that.
Yeah, that one was my next question.
Yes. And the reason it's such a wide range is that right now Metro has various partners, for instance, the UW. So if you work at the UW, you can get a Metro card for very low cost. And that's because of the.
Seventy dollars.
That's because of the partnership between the UW and Metro. So if Metro said, hey, fares are free from now on, there's not a lot of incentive for the UW to continue that partnership. So, you know, they may or may not, and that's why there's such a wide range. So if, if everybody who's currently a partner remains a partner, it would be closer to that eight million dollars. And if everybody just said, well, heck, it's free, why should we pay you all this money we've been contracting you with? You know, then it would be more like 18 million. And of course, we discussed various ways that we could make up for that shortfall, but we could do all of that right now. And there's opportunity costs that would be kind of missed, you know? So in general, the, I think people, people prefer. prefer fast, reliable, frequent transit to free transit.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting stats, though, like ridership typically increases between 20 and 60%, but only 5 to 30% represents fewer car trips. Most of the increase is from people who would have otherwise walked or biked or stayed home, and, uh, current transit users making more trips than they otherwise would have. Um, the other portion of the agenda, we, um, passed a resolution to the 2025 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Plan. We had Amendment Number 13. So there are two charging stations, EV charging stations, that are going to be constructed. One is at, uh, 4825 American Parkway, just north of the intersection of Highway 90 and Highway 151. And the other is 2763 County Highway N in the town of Pleasant Springs, the, the Travel Plaza there, which is about, uh, 14 miles south of the American Parkway Charging Station. And this is just like a, you know, a quarter mile off of the interstate exit there. Um, and I had sent an email the other night, um, to everybody. I encourage you all to take the survey, um, at GreaterMadisonMPO.org to help the MPO maintain its federal certification.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so next, we are in item nine, uh, Standing Committee Reports. Um, we will start with the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let me just pull up this first one. I'll move approval of Ordinance 2025-031, repealing the fire facility's impact fee and creating the police facility's impact fee by repealing Section 44146 and creating Section 1020 of the Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Finance Committee did approve this.
Okay, what is this?
We've discussed this back during the referendum process, process, but an impact fee is one of the ways that we can raise money, um, outside of, uh, property taxes. Um, it is a fee that is paid by developers for new development, and so it's meant to pay for, uh, increasing costs related to the growth of the city. And so we, we currently have an impact fee for the fire depart, for the new fire facility, the newest one on Sine Road. Um, that is becoming close to the, uh, raising the maximum amount of money it could raise. And so, um, the idea behind this is to eliminate that and replace it with one for the fire, the police facility. Um, Ellers did do an analysis on this. The, we can raise more than what is suggested here, but the idea behind it was to make it basically a continuation of the fire impact fee, so it was, they took a look at what inflation would be, and then so increased the fee accordingly, uh, with inflation. So, um, the recommended fees are 100, 861 for a single-family home, 574 per unit for a multifamily building, 19 cents per square foot for commercial and 30 cents per, oh, sorry, 19 per square foot for industrial and 30 cents per square foot for commercial. Um, this would raise, this would generate around five million dollars. The total we could raise if we wanted to would be eight million. Um, and once again, these fees are paid for by developers, uh, but obviously that, those fees are passed on to the people that purchase or rent the properties.
Okay, so, um, and we have John Cameron from Ellers. John, do you want to add anything else?
Uh, nothing to add at this time. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Question, comment? Yes.
I just wanted to make one comment. Um, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, the rate that 861 for a single-family and then all the other numbers that Alder Gerhart recited that I don't have in front of me because I lost the page, um, that will increase every year with the cost of construction. Um, as, as we go, I'm seeing nodding heads. So I just did some quick math, just to kind of put this in perspective for folks. Um, the 123 single-family homes that we just approved, the preliminary platform in No Oaks Ranch earlier today, if they were all built at the 2025 rate, would bring in $106,000. Um, and that doesn't count any of the, um, multifamily or commercial that would go in there. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that in perspective, and that number will certainly be higher because it will not all be built in one year, as, uh, as, uh, Phil mentioned earlier. So just to kind of quantify it, and when, when we hear that the new, all this new development is being paid for by current taxpayers for the benefit of future taxpayers, um, this is kind of a way we can recoup those costs, and that just puts it in perspective for a neighborhood of the size we just, uh, approved the preliminary platform tonight.
Any other question, comment? No? So, and the idea that we decided to go comparative to fire was because of, you know, we have a housing crisis. We cannot increase this type of fee because affect, you know, affordability of housing, so.
Yes, we tried to strike a balance there of, uh, what might be appropriate to collect to help reduce the overall borrowing, uh, and interest payments on the new police services facility, uh, because as I recall, any of the impact fees that are collected have to be applied specifically to that project as well. So that is an important thing to note.
Micah.
Good question. I forgot. In finance, how many years does this go for, or does it go continuously until you meet the amount you're allowed to collect, or?
I think so, yeah.
John, you mind covering that? I know it can only go to the, to the, uh, 4.9 million, but I don't know if there's a time limit. I don't recall in our conversations.
Um, the study goes over a 20-year time period. Uh, generally speaking, in this, in state law, you've got eight years to spend the fees. Um, and that's just money in, money out, one year to the next. But the study time period, um, looked out 20 years in terms of growth projections.
Okay. Any other question, comment? Okay, um, all those in favor of Ordinance 2025-0-31, say aye.
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 Any opposed, emotion carries?
Uh, we'll move approval of resolution R-21525, amending the 2025 Capital Projects Fund Budget, reallocation of 2024A debt proceeds.
Second.
Finance did approve.
Okay, what is this?
Um, this is, uh, so we borrowed money in 2024 for the police facility and a purchase of a fire truck. Um, we need to spend 70%, 75% of that money by Friday. Um, there was delays with the police facility, um, for multiple reasons. Um, so in order to meet that deadline, um, we do have some flexibility because we issued a note during our last disissuance, issuance instead of a bond. Uh, notes give us more flexibility, so we are actually able to swap funds, um, and use those funds on streets projects. It really won't change anything, uh, in terms of how much money is being spent on each of the projects. It's just, um, moving things around so that we can stay within, uh, the requirements and avoid any potential arbitrage payments, um, in the future.
Okay, so everyone understand what we're doing? Okay. Okay, uh, any question, comment? Uh, this is a two-third, so we need to do a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Lottase.
Aye.
Alder Lepper.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next one. Next, I'll move approval of resolution R-21625, amending the 2025 Debt and Capital Projects Funds, Fund Budgets, payment on special assessments and excess interest revenue to reduce future debt issuance.
Second.
Um, so, again, this is related to our debt issuance, um, just a different thing that we're doing here. Um, we didn't borrow anything in 2025, so this is in regards to the 2024 debt issuance. And we also, um, oh, I'm sorry, no, this is, it's in regards to the future. This is regard to the future. So, um, we had two special assessments, um, relatively large special assessments that were paid a little bit earlier than anticipated. In fact, one in the amount of around $500,000 and the other in the amount of around $400,000. Um, we also had higher than anticipated interest on our, um, debt issuance, um, in the total of around $175,000, so that adds up to a little over a million. Um, the idea is to utilize those funds to reduce the debt issuance that we will have to do in 2026, mostly for the police facility. Um, and it streamlined things from an accounting perspective. Interest revenue can create complications, uh, with both tracking and then also potentially can result in arbitrage payment. Um, so this is a financial strategy that's been used multiple times to, uh, streamline that for staff and also, um, there's something called bona fide tax, deck, oh, Misty, I'm losing it. I don't remember what it was called. Bona fide, we just, we have to basically have our account be, meet some certain criteria in order for us to call it this type of account it is, and if we are incurring too much interest, it does not meet that, that criteria.
I, bona fide debt service fund?
Thank you.
Can you, can you, can you, because I, you know, you, you spoke too fast. Um, can you explain for the people that, um, what is that, Misty? For the people that are watching the meeting?
Yep, what a bona fide debt service fund is, or what?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so when we issue debt in 2024, and every time that we issue tax-exempt debt, um, there's a lot of rules that we have to follow in order to keep our debt tax exempt. One of the things is having a bona fide debt service fund, which basically means that the debt service fund that we have, that separate kind of accounting that we keep for the debt payments, has to basically clear out. So we collect money from property taxes and we make the principal and interest payments using that money, and it should more or less clear out at the end of every year, so that we can show that what we're collecting in property taxes for debt is really going to pay debt. And so to be a bona fide debt service fund, uh, you're, you have to basically clear it out at the end of time. If you do that, then that arbitrage payment calculation that Gabriella was referring to, uh, we don't have to do that calculation for arbitrage in that fund because we are a bona fide debt service fund. Um, the, the benefit of what we're talking about here is that we will, uh, reduce the amount that we're going to borrow in 2026, which will reduce how much it will cost us to borrow, um, both from an issuance perspective, but then also how much interest we pay on that debt, uh, going forward.
Okay. Any question? Logan?
Yeah, Misty, I don't know if you know the answer to this. I'm just curious why the property owner decided to say, here's $503,073, uh, earlier than necessary?
So it wasn't earlier than necessary. It was earlier than anticipated. So when we issued that special assessment for the uptown roads, some of the properties had to pay it right away because they were ultimately using the roads right away. But that, uh, council gave some, a, a deferral relief available for properties that were not developed at that point and said, you know what, you don't have to pay us for your share of these roads yet, but once you develop, or once some sort of a trigger happens, you sell the property or something like that, then this amount is due. And so that trigger happened, the property, I believe this property sold, or it, uh, did some development. And so as part of that process, the entitlement process, they made that payment in full.
Okay. I, I have a question about the interest. Um, you know, the, you know, we are using $175,000 in excess, uh, of budget 2025 in interest. Why, um, why don't we decide to keep that amount in a contingency fund instead of moving to a capital account? I know what you're trying to do, but my question is, because it's liquid, you know, it's money, and maybe that we can need next year for any contingency, like we are planning to use some contingency fund in January for the overtime in the, in the fire department. So why we don't just keep that money there, you know, because it's $175,000, it's not like a million dollar, um, for future, you know, contingency that we can have in 2026? You know what I mean?
So this is money that was earned in interest revenue just on the debt service fund. So the interest that the city earned on the rest of our money is in the other fund.
Okay.
We have flexibility in kind of what you want to do. This is interest just on the debt service fund. So it's the money that we collected from property taxes to make those principal and interest payments. I collect all the money mostly in the beginning of the year, and those principal and interest payments happen throughout the year. So we earn interest on that cash while it's sitting there. And so it, it is restricted just to the interest on the debt service fund and really needs to be contained within the debt service fund parameters.
Okay, so now that one, okay. That one makes sense. Okay. Any question? Comment? No? Huh? Oh, I need two third, so we need roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Lottase.
Aye.
Alder Lepper.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. I move approval of resolution R-21725, amending the 2026 General Fund Budget, Finance Specialists and LTE Building Inspector, Inspector Hours from vacant code enforcement position and reduced planning intern hours.
Second.
Uh, Finance did approve this. This, oh, and, Board of Public Works.
Board of Public Works approved as well.
This is, well, so after the, this finance, budget finance specialist was part of the referendum that failed. And, um, as we all know, city staff has been working hard to try to find ways to make, improve efficiency and, and get that work done, um, within the current budget. Uh, it was, um, there is currently a vacant code enforcement position in the Building Inspection Department, and the decision was made to reallocate the funding for that position, plus, um, some funding that will likely be available from the planning intern, um, based on what has been used by those, that intern in the past, to, um, do two things. Number one, hire a finance specialist position that would be used for budgeting, mostly within Public Works or with other departments that had to have like high, more complex budgeting or RFPs that, um, cannot be, uh, that cannot be, it, it's difficult for them to absorb it in the department. Um, so that would, that position would be. And then it also will allow for up to eight hours per week of limited time, building inspector time, um, because obviously the Building Inspector Department is losing a, a full-time employee, gives them some flexibility on getting some extra support on busy periods. Um, it was discussed about whether or not this will affect public safety. Um, building inspection, it's possible that there will be delays as a result of the lowered amount of staff time, but, um, they will absorb the work and the quality of the building inspection will remain the same. And it's just one of the consequences of, uh, of a failed referendum.
Okay, any question, comment? Uh, Mike?
I was, I'm sorry to see the building inspection go away. I mean, that is what it is, but, um, I really like the addition of a procurement specialist. I think that not only will it take, uh, effort away from, or things away from other people to, to they can devote, uh, time to theirs, but, uh, also will probably start saving the city money, yeah, on its own, just by finding efficiencies and things like that. So I think it's going to be good for the city.
And the other thing I want to mention that this position was in the Baker Teale Staffing Study, so it was a part of that, so it was a recommendation. So we are following that study. So, uh, Logan?
Uh, just a, a quick clarifier, um, to Alder Lottase's point here. Uh, will this procurement specialist or finance specialist position be helping do things that other staff are currently working on, like, um, I think of if Ross is writing an RFP or a grant application for, uh, any number of transportation items, is this something that this person could help with, which would then kind of just shift around some of the work and then free up, you know, in the example I just gave, like Ross, to work on some other transportation-related projects? Is that kind of the, the goal?
Yeah, certainly. The goal is, is to allow, uh, in particular, our engineers and our engineering techs to focus less on some of these finance-related tasks, whether it's related to a grant or whether it's a request for proposal, uh, contract management, uh, and, and effectively liaising with finance, uh, to allow them ideally additional capacity to spend on their area of expertise, AKA engineering, engineering technician. And, uh, the position will also be available to other city departments as well. So if you have a department that doesn't typically do RFPs for something, but has a, a larger project come up, uh, where it may, uh, take a bit more time and be a little less efficient if that department, uh, does the work, uh, they can tap into this, uh, position, who does it more frequently and ideally, uh, more efficiently and can help support that. So, yeah, we, we hope to, uh, create some efficiencies and, um, uh, a bit more capacity within staff, uh, who are already doing some of this as part of their other duties.
Any other question, comments? Okay, uh, two third, yes, again. They're all budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Lattasay.
Aye.
Alder Lepper.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Can I ask you, Dave, why you vote no?
I've worked five years to keep our neighborhood clean.
What?
I've worked for five years to keep our neighborhood clean. It was terrible before I started. And once you get it there, you have more, there's more pride in our neighborhood. It's really made a difference. And losing that position and now you're telling me, well, the referendum now, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna have to let garbage pile up on the streets, you know, I, it's just, you know, what do my, what do my neighbors see where they get for their tax dollars? They'd like to see a clean neighborhood, so.
But what does that mean that with the, I think the position that we didn't, it was a deputy, so to, so the inspection, isn't it?
So there were actually two vacancies in the building inspection department. One was in a code enforcement role and one, obviously, from the retirement of the building inspection director. So with those two vacancies, we took a look at the overall city operations and where we could potentially create the position that was identified in Baker Tilly in the, in the procurement and finance role. We do recognize that this is a reduction in, in headcount in the building inspection department, and of course, it is not ideal. I know Alder Herps, you and I worked closely on improving some of the code compliance concerns that have been brought to your attention by residents there. We will still look to address those. There could be clearly some delays at times depending upon workload and so forth. But the department has hired a new third individual. That person started about a month or so ago. And so that does have them with three full-time equivalents. And the new person is also, much like the previous code inspector, working on obtaining building code certifications so that they can also assist with inspections and so forth. One of the things that the pool of LTE hours could be utilized for could also be code compliance or property maintenance compliance issues as well. It doesn't have to be specifically for inspection of, of construction-related projects as well. So I know that this has been an item of note in District One in particular, and it still is front and center as well. I can't promise there won't be some delays, but we'll definitely continue to prioritize those things whenever they're reported to us. Or if, when building inspection staff is out and about, they see those things to proactively address them as well.
Thank you, Chad. I'll change my vote to aye, yes.
Okay. I'll move approval of resolution R 21825 to approve modifications of the 2026 Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program.
Second.
Finance approved this. This increases the maximum award from $15,000 to $25,000 for the Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program. Right now, planning staff is managing 13 grants. This is a lot of administrative work and they believe that is probably too many individual grantees. When the program was originally created at that lower level of 10 to 15,000 at the top, we were managing about five to six grants. We could still put the same amount of money into the community that we're giving out now, but, but bring the number of grantees down to five or six and make a higher investment in those individual organizations. Also, this adds language to incentivize programming in Traceway Drive. They haven't figured out exactly how that would be scored, but potentially increase scoring in the application. And finance did, we did talk at finance about how we want to make sure that we don't, we want to make sure that programming in other parts of, other neighborhoods outside of that North Feschecherry Road neighborhood are still being financed. And of course, that's, that's going to be a consideration as they figure out how to implement that. But those are the two major changes, increasing the max award amount, adding the language. The comment about the number of grantees is really just, it's not specified in the grant program. It's just likely, it's a likely outcome of increasing the amount of money per grantee.
Okay, we have Joe Maldonado. Joe.
So I do support this. Just in my previous career, I was, managed grants at United Way, so I understand like the scramble to be able to get different grants. So having a higher amount, I think reduces the burden on the organizations. I'm wondering about process-wise, do we have anything in place to ensure that there's kind of equitable distribution across the four H and I neighborhoods? Like, is there any math in the rubric about, you know, this number of grants may go to this, you know, Belmar or one in Southdale, et cetera?
Joe, Jessica Wolf is on the, online, so maybe she can answer that question for you. Jessica?
I can go ahead and take that. So I was just working through the grant documents today, and there isn't anything like percentage-wise that evaluates if each neighborhood is getting a certain amount. I think it also depends on who applies and what neighborhoods they're looking at. So I would say, we don't, there's not necessarily a look at that every neighborhood gets the same amount of funding, but it is taken into consideration when people are scoring, where those funds are going, and what neighborhoods they're targeting.
Okay. No, I, I wasn't looking for like something super like technical and detailed, but more so guidance that, you know, states that we want that. And I think also having representation across the four H and I neighborhoods on the committee is a helpful way to be able to do that.
Any other question? Comments? None? Okay. Do we need two thirds? No. All those in favor of resolution R dash 218 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I'll move approval of resolution R 22225, approving the purchase or of replacement fire department staff vehicle.
Second.
Finance approved. This is a response vehicle, so it's not just, you know, transportation, it's actually responding to events with the fire trucks. It's a $48,000 vehicle through the state contract. This is gas-powered, similar to a squad car. There is a lot of accessories and equipment that's required. And then I did ask about electric vehicles. It's, it's at this point, response vehicles just really aren't practical, an electric vehicle is not practical for a response vehicle type. So it's a gas-powered vehicle. And the next resolution is about the accessories to outfit it.
Did I ask a question? When it was in the pre-approval? Okay, yes, Bill.
Yeah, at the finance committee meeting, I pointed out that the base, the base model is a hybrid, and we opted for the gas-powered. And after the meeting, Chief Sarver did explain that it's not only EVs, but also hybrids that have difficulty managing all the accessories, so.
Do you want to add anything, Chief, or? Okay. Any other question, comment? Oh, I have a question, okay. Because this one was a replacement vehicle that I assume was approved in the budget. Why do we need to see this here again?
This is one of the things that we will be taking a look at. We're in the process, Misty and I have engaged in some preliminary conversations, awaiting the outcome of some state legislation related to increasing the public construction amount that could have some direct bearing on how we might make some potential adjustments on what comes to council and what doesn't.
Because the idea is that everything that was approved in the budget, we already approved all the, it shouldn't come back to us for, you know what I mean? So that one, we can streamline the process, make our meetings shorter, not too much work for staff, that they had to go to the, the system and put all of it, yeah, so. It's coming.
What's the, what's the replacement cycle on, on this vehicle? Is it a?
Staff vehicles are 10 years.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I like that number, okay.
Yeah. The one we're replacing is 12 years old right now.
Okay. Any other question? Jake and then Mike.
Yeah, sorry, he was getting attention from me. How much time does a vehicle spending on the road on average? Daily, maybe, we could say?
There's a lot of routine travel with these vehicles, the staff vehicles, as far as the chiefs run around doing day-to-day business. You know, it can range. It just depends on what issues we're facing that day. So I mean, the big thing is idle time, especially in different environmental situations. So there could be incidents where we have a vehicle out there idling for eight hours. I would say that's rare, but it can happen. So that's why some of these, we have some limited capabilities with hybrid or EV. Is, and we, you know, we don't order these with the frequency that our law enforcement partners do. And we also did a lot of due diligence by asking surrounding municipalities that are ordering EV vehicles. And we have not gotten positive feedback as far as being able to adapt to our situations.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Micah?
Oh, okay, okay. Bill.
Yeah, you said the current vehicle is 12 years old. How, how many miles are on that? I'm curious to.
Oof, got me on that one.
Okay.
A lot, I would say. But I, I'd say that we don't necessarily, and again, I'm in my seventh month, right? But from what I've gathered is we don't necessarily at 10 years, we're pulling the trigger. It's really, how's the vehicle doing? What's our current need? So.
Repairs.
Yeah, and, and that's really, I believe what they've been basing it on. So. But I do not know the mileage. It's a Suburban. So as far as like daily routine traffic, it's not ideal for us as far as fuel efficiency and size and even storage issues, so.
Yes.
I have a technical question. Why do we sometimes, for these purchases, like approve that we are gonna auction off the existing equipment and sometimes we don't? What do we, what is the?
It just depends on if there's a vehicle that is being auctioned off. We'll try to incorporate that into the resolution so that we have authorization to go ahead and dispose of it. I'm not sure if you've decided what's happening with, with the vehicle that this is replacing at this point in time.
So our intention was to surplus it. But I know that just since I've been here, we have seen Misty put out this vehicle is available. I think we had one of those recently. So I'm not sure how, what we would do with that. I'd have to seek some advice from y'all.
Yeah.
But we are not going to keep it.
We have, we do not have a use for that vehicle.
Okay.
The fire department.
Okay. Okay, any other question? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R dash 222 dash 25, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move approval of resolution R.
May I just happen there real quick? I just wanted to double-check the resolution there, Micah. It does authorize the disposition of the prior asset in it that was referenced in the attached pre-approval. So this resolution does cover the disposition of that vehicle. Yeah, that's typically where we do it, and I hadn't had the resolution itself pulled up, so my apologies.
I'm approval of resolution 22325, approving purchase of radios and accessories for replacement fire department staff car.
Second.
Finance approved this. This is the package to outfit that said car that we are just doing. The package is around $28,000. Because it's over $25,000, it cannot be approved administratively, which is why we're seeing it, even though we don't typically see these things. This is just kind of the market rate for these cars, even though it has gone up significantly in previous years, but it has been a while since we outfitted a car like this, so that's probably why.
Okay, any question, comments? Logan.
Is any of the equipment that's in the Suburban currently salvageable? Or is it just so dated, being 12 years old, that it's not worth it?
We'll be able to, we use portable laptops as far as our guidance and communications with dispatch and routing and things, so all of that stuff is salvageable, as well as the radios, which are the more expensive components of those vehicles. So those will be removed and at, at least be attempted to repurpose.
Okay, any other question?
And we have, if I can add something. We, this is a standard package. It's just the cost have increased. Again, we did due diligence with surrounding municipalities, our law enforcement partners, and this is right in line with what they're paying. And since they do it much more frequently, we felt comfortable. But we did not add anything special or any leather packages or ground lights or anything like that, so.
Okay. Any other question, comments? Nope, okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash 223 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Good night.
I move approval of resolution R 22525, a resolution supporting collaboration with neighboring communities to explore the creation of a joint fire and EMS district.
Second.
Finance approved this. This is in relation to the ongoing conversation we've had about creating a joint fire and EMS district with Oregon, Village of Oregon and City of Verona. This is basically saying that we want to move forward with that process, that planning process. I believe this resolution is being mirrored in the other municipalities. And it authorizes up to $50,000 for planning for this, with the source of money being the TID closure excess increment.
Okay. So Chad, do you want to, I, I need to add something to this.
Yeah, do you want to go first?
Yeah, so I think the City of Verona is not ready to move forward with this. I have a talk to the mayor this afternoon. For several reasons, I will recommend you to watch the meeting from last night, from the common council from Verona. So, and I think we need to continue to have the, you know, Fitchport and Oregon, we need to have, continue the exploring this option to gather more information, to determine if it could be feasible or not in the future to do this. But I think if we move forward, one of the things that I, I mentioned to the mayor this afternoon, if you guys are out, the study is going to be for the City of Fitchport and the, the Village of Oregon, we are not going to include you in the study. And he said, okay. So I think we need to strike here. I will strike out the City of Verona from the resolution.
I don't know if it's necessary to strike it out. I think if they're not interested in participating, I think it.
We are going to do it with the RFP?
Yeah, yeah, we can address that through the RFP. And also just in the, perhaps remote chance that they have a change of heart, that it would still be within it. I don't necessarily anticipate that, but I think that we're not out anything, so to speak, if we don't strike it. I will add that the Village of Oregon has approved a similar resolution and is willing to continue the conversations and also provide financial contribution that may be necessary for any sort of consultant resources related to creating that roadmap, communication, outreach, and further analysis.
Yeah, go there.
In your, in your discussion with Ron, did you, this is kind of a intuitive question. Is it that they're getting so much tax revenue from the big investment of Epic down there that they don't, you know, they say, well, we don't, we're getting enough money, we can, we can, we can keep our perfect kingdom.
No, I think it was more about, well, one of those comments, I don't know, it was mentioned last night, but I think it was, they want more information. They want to know how much is gonna, gonna be the cost saving, how much is gonna be the structure, how much, you know, how many chief we are gonna have, and all of that is gonna come in the study. This is what I say, you know, I mean, and this is the, the idea of approving this is we want to go to do this exercise of exploring all the options. And then, if at the end of the day, Fitchport say, you know what? No, or, oh, yes, you know, but we have some data, some information, and we don't go through this process, how are we gonna know? So, and this is what I tried to explain this afternoon, but I think there is also, I think the other thing that they are concerned is look, they want to have more oversight of their own department, and I think in the district, you can lose the oversight. But it's also seeing that we can, you know, adjust when we put together the structure of the district, you know what I mean? How the oversight is gonna be, what are the internal control? You know what I mean? So all of that thing, we can manage and we can have control. But I think there is that one, is the lack of. But I think there is that one, is the lack of information, they want more information, they are concerned with the oversight and the lack of control and all of that. And I think there are a couple of firefighters in the fire department that they are, what they told me is the majority of the fire department are against this.
It's always gonna be the case, no matter where this is done in the country, they're always, I'm sure ours are against it too, you know? That's always gonna, that's always gonna be the case.
But this is, I don't know, Chad, you watched the meeting too?
I did. Chief Sarver, did you want to comment about the last question at all? I mean, I saw your nonverbals. And only just because, just so that your team's feelings are appropriately represented here based upon conversations you've had with them.
Thank you, actually, yeah. So our folks are overwhelmingly in favor of this. As we talked, I think before, in the committee of the whole, there's currently, the state is incentivizing municipalities, creating districts, and looking at trying to be more efficient and supporting that with financial incentive over a course of five years, and it's fairly substantial. So no, our, we've talked a lot about it. I think myself and my command staff did really a job of presenting the information and the reason why upfront before we even, God, I would say, serious about this, and really talked about that future, and it wasn't, it was a selfless conversation, not about, you know, protecting status and things like that. It was about creating a really good future environment for the folks that are 10 or 20 years down the road, the common councils that are trying to figure out financing to get there. And that's what we talked about. We didn't talk about whether our fire trucks were gonna remain green or anything like that. It was more about how are we gonna face the challenges as a, you know, a team member with the, with the city and the other cities. And obviously, you know, I come from a background of consolidations, and they were all very, very successful for all parties involved and accomplished the goals they were set out to accomplish. So no, I, I've talked to our union steward and onboard, obviously, there's details, right? But generally onboard with the concept and very well supported within Fitchburg.
Okay. And I'll just, yes, thank you, chief. And I'll just add, Chief Sarver had mentioned, clearly, right now, the state legislature is incentivizing regionalization of fire and EMS service in particular. The state law is constructed as it relates to levy limits in such a way as that fire and/or EMS districts receive beneficial treatment in the levy limit calculation. Chief Sarver also mentioned the innovation grant funding that is out there right now that's going to be running for the next five years, that could potentially be utilized to help implement and offset some of the initial costs associated with a creation of a district. And I will also add that anybody who's served on this body for a couple of years at least knows that this is not the first conversation that has happened in recent memory about fire and EMS service. And in fact, there's been some ongoing conversations over the last couple of years related specifically to the City of Fitchburg and what its long-term options of EMS service might be. And I just want to clarify that with Chief Sarver's arrival, with his extensive consolidation experience and background, it did not, this idea did not come with him. He was not hired for the purposes of creating a fire and EMS district. This is a conversation that has been going on. We have been fortunate through our hiring process for the fire chief to have found somebody by coincidence that has extensive experience with consolidation and fire and EMS districts. And because this has been an ongoing conversation, it would be foolish for us not to utilize the experience that he brings to help us wade through this conversation. And as Mayor Aratafraada pointed out, we're merely gathering information at this point on how a district could be formed, and the common council is not committing to any change at this point in time, and they are not obligated to move forward if they're not satisfied with the outcome of the information gathering and the development of that roadmap, if you will.
Okay, so we have two questions, Micah and then Jake, do you have?
I'm gonna ask.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask, I guess, a logistical question of how we are going to structure an RFP for a joint fire and EMS district with a community that we already share a joint EMS district with that will not be participating in the study?
Good question.
Yeah, yeah, that's a fair question. And what we'll do is we'll look to focus the RFP on the long-term impacts for both the two communities that are currently interested as it relates to fire and EMS service. The current agreement with Vetrona EMS district does allow for a municipality to withdraw with appropriate notice and trigger some other components that would take place about how to distribute assets and those sorts of things. So that is one of the logistical items we would have to work through, but we certainly don't see that as an overall, I guess, debilitating barrier to this that can't be overcome or navigated. And the RFP certainly doesn't have any, any real impact on the RFP and the study itself.
And also, we need to remember that starting in January, we are gonna be contributing two-thirds to the EMS, so. Logan?
All right. I didn't have many questions before, I have a bunch now. So first of all, I guess, what happens if we do all this due diligence and get this information that Verona says, we need more information to make a decision? And then they, you know, we get the results and they say, hey, that looks good, actually, could we get back in? Do they just kind of, what, are they contributing financially, paying us back for any of the work that we would be doing that then they'd be kind of benefiting from as kind of originally discussed before they decided not to move forward as it sounds?
At this time, they're not choosing to participate either financially or with staff or elected officials or any other collaboration. So if they were to make a decision that would want to participate in the district, they would have to be relying on the information that was compiled related to the two communities that are having it developed and perhaps use it anecdotally to their situation or go out and assess that on their own to determine if that was the right move for them. You know, I want to at least keep the door open to not only the City of Verona, they have been a really good partner with the City of Fitchburg, not only just on EMS service, but on public safety in general and all many other aspects of local government. And we certainly don't want their position on this matter as it stands today to affect that, in particular, not just in the short term, but the long term. And there could be other municipalities that would eventually come forward as well, who would have an interest in this. I think that, you know, depending on how it all comes together and what the structure is and the governance and as folks start to potentially see the efficiencies that could develop from this, you know, hopefully there'll be some additional information or interest in it. One of the examples I can use, well, it isn't necessarily a district, is the multi-jurisdictional Public Safety Information System Commission that we participate in. It's a shared records management system and other technologically-based services that started out with the City of Fitchburg, the City of Sun Prairie, and the City of Middleton about 20-plus years ago. And since that time, it has added the City of Manona, the City of Verona, and I believe the City of Wanakee or Village of Wanakee is now interested in becoming a part of that commission as well. So I think this is another example where there could be some really good things that come out of it. It is early in the process to know for certain, but ideally, it is such a, it's created in such a way that it, others look at and say, you know, it makes sense for us to try to participate in that.
So before we came forward with this, I assume, and correct me if this is an incorrect assumption, that we also reached out to other communities beyond the three that are listed here, Fitchburg, Oregon, and Verona. Was there any lukewarm interest even from like Stoughton or McFarland or anybody like that, that maybe now this, like Verona's decision may or may not change their mind at all? I'm just curious.
So we didn't do any direct outreach to other municipalities at this level. I know Chief Sarver had conversations with area fire chiefs to determine if there was any interest in moving forward. I don't, I don't know as though anybody has at least stepped up at the, at the local government level, in so much as perhaps there's interest in collaborating at the fire chief level in some, some communities. But at this point in time, the focus was with the three geographically connected communities to see if there was a, an arrangement that could be reached in, at this point in time. Perhaps only with two of the three communities is something feasible right now. That doesn't mean that if there's another, you know, in this, at this point in time, another geographically situated city or village that might make sense to bring into the conversation that that's not possible. You know, as we start to get into this, it'll be interesting to see if some others do come forward with some interest.
And then just one kind of technical question. Is there, under the state, state law, whichever, however it's being encouraged to us to explore this, is there a requirement that we have a certain number of municipalities or a certain square mileage or anything like that that we cover to get any sort of the innovation grants or anything?
Nothing that I'm aware of that does that. You know, ideally, they're looking for the efficiencies that are created is what the main purpose of the innovation grant is. And of course, if there is the byproduct of cost savings, that's, that's certainly advantageous as well. I mean, I will be honest, I don't necessarily anticipate, at least on the personnel side, that this district is going to save money. I think what it may do is create opportunity, though, for staffing to be added and in particular support staffing. I mean, if you look at Vetrona EMS, for instance, an agency with a three-plus million-dollar budget and over 20 full-time employees, the EMS chief is still responsible for a lot of the human resources-related tasks, the budget-related tasks. Fortunately, he has a great relationship with the two cities who have human resources support, finance support, legal support as well. But, but that, that district has grown and grown in a good way, but probably is understaffed, particularly on a support basis, an administrative basis, to be honest with you, in my opinion.
But even if the, doesn't save money, the levy limit benefits in terms of the calculation would be significant, even if it was a wash in terms of hard costs.
But also, we're, yeah, we're also looking at capital saving, you know, and also if we need to, you know, we need to build another fire station, you know? You know, so if we work in a regional, you know, we don't need to, maybe we need to be like one station between Oregon and Fitchburg instead of having one another in Fitchburg. Another Verona, Oregon is looking to build some station, so, and they are looking at that to see how we can, you know, be more efficient with all of that too, you know what I mean? Where to locate the fire station and with a regional perspective, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, I almost hit myself in the face with the microphone. I guess what I was trying to get at with the questions I was asking was if it's still worth exploring if there's only two municipalities versus three, and it sounds like it is. So I just wanted to make sure that that was indeed the case.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R, or, no, what is that? R-225? Where am I?
Yeah, R-22.
R.
Number eight.
Nine, eight, eight.
Oh, I am here, okay, home, sorry. All those in favor of resolution R-225-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
I move approval of resolution R-22625, authorizing the transfer of city-owned DaneCom public safety radio system equipment from the City of Fitchburg to Dane County.
Second.
This was passed by Finance. We are transferring about $2 million of capital equipment. It is radio equipment that we currently own, and we operate at a cost of $12,000 annually. It is, we are transferring that equipment to Dane County to be part of their DaneCom network. Dane County is happy to take on the equipment, and we are also, as part of this, allowing them to keep that equipment on our water tower and will save us costs going forward, both from a capital perspective and operating perspective.
Can you say how much we want to say? It's important.
Well, $12,000 annually in operating costs, but the $2 million in replacement costs.
Okay, so it's significant. Any question, comment?
I will add, I emailed all of the documents to common council late this afternoon. I do extend my apologies for the unanticipated length of time it took to get them finalized with Dane County. They have all been uploaded to the public agenda packet, so members of the community can see those documents at this point in time as well. So if anybody has any questions regarding the docs after you've had a chance to take a deeper dive into them, by all means, let us know. They have been assessed by staff at both the county and the city, as well as legal counsel at both the staff and city. And I will also add that the city and county's radio vendor has also taken a look and contributed in the form of the equipment lists and diagrams as well. So there's been kind of a few different pieces we had to get all together to get these docs put, put together.
I have a question. When the, when will the transfer start?
The transfer would be effective. This is contingent upon county board approval, I think, on December 18th is their meeting, but it would happen on December 31st already.
Okay, thank you.
And that date was selected to help from an audit perspective, so we didn't have the equipment on our books on January 1st. So that was a request from our finance director that if we could pull that off, that would be great, and the county was amenable to it.
Okay, good to know. Okay, any other question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-226-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move approval of resolution R-22925, authorizing city staff to contract with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, CARPC, for facilitation services related to development discussions in southeast Fitchburg.
Second.
Fitch, I'm sorry, Finance approved. This is the, in regards to development adjacent to the Village of Oregon. Specifically, there has been property acquired to create a new school. Also, the Department of Corrections obviously is building in that area of town, and there's just generally renewed interest in developing in that part of Fitchburg. That is obviously something that would have to happen in concert with the Village of Oregon. In order to help facilitate those discussions, CARPC actually provides that facilitation. They can write a report and do a report back to council and the village board. So we are contracting with them. $7,700 is the cost, 50% will be billed to the Village of Oregon.
Okay, any question, comment? Do you know what we are trying to do here? Okay. Okay, are you, are you, do you need, do you want to add anything? Okay, so I need two-thirds of the vote, so we are doing a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Latase.
Aye.
Alder Lepper.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regston.
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Thank you. Okay, anything else that you want to add for Finance?
The only thing is that we are in the process of starting the audit, so there's some early work happening, and the majority of the work will happen in March.
Okay, thank you. Personal committee.
No, no report at this time.
Public Safety and Human Services.
I think we'll just mention, Pancake Cafe has a new owner, or new owners. They've managed it for a while, but now they're owners and they, we approved the wine license for them.
Oh, do they have wine there?
Mimosa's.
Oh, mimosa, yeah, okay. Okay, so then we move to unfinished business. We have an ordinance, I don't know who is gonna read this.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025-0-32, updating the Vetrona EMS commission composition as modified.
composition as modified by intergovernmental agreement update by amending ordinance section 6-230 of the Fitchburg general ordinances.
Second. So this ordinance is an update to reflect the recently approved update to the intergovernmental agreement covering Fitchroney EMS. As this body knows, back, I think in August, you approved the updated intergovernmental agreement. And as part of that intergovernmental agreement, it changed the governing structure to increase the number of commissioners for the city of Fitchburg from three to four. And this ordinance change reflects that intergovernmental agreement language change.
And the other thing I want to mention is that I, I am moving forward with some, the appointment in the first week of January, we decided?
The first meeting, the 13th?
The 13th. And also I decided that I want to appoint two Alders to that commission. And Jake is one of them. And Alder Maica volunteered to be the second Alder. So, thank you. Okay. And then I want to, I had to bring two more people. Okay, yes.
Some questions on the computations that we do to figure out who owes what. There's a table in here under section 4.01, operating expenses. There are three factors in there. The first one specifically says it's dividing by, you know, the three-year average total equalized value. The next two don't list any divide, any, anything that they're dividing by. We should probably include that. So we know what the denominator is. I mean, it's pretty obvious what it is, but if we don't state it, that might not be such a great thing.
But this one was already, we approved this.
Did we approve this specific verbiage?
Oh, it was missing. Okay.
Yes, this has been approved already. This is the actual IGA that, is that what you're, am I on the right table here?
It's, it's a two-column table factor and then total operating expenses.
Yep, yep. Yeah. So, and obviously if you're looking at a three-year average, it is defined down below that it's the most recently completed years by calendar. So the, in order to obtain the average, you would look at those three years.
Right. But, I mean, it's a percentage that we're figuring out and it doesn't explicitly say we're, we're taking our population. It says we're taking our population, but it doesn't say we're dividing by the total population, is my point.
Correct. Because the three-year average, so, so they will take a look at each community's population and the three-year average, and then that ultimately, that percentage of the overall district is my understanding. So the overall population of the district and then what each municipality's share of that population is equates to the percentage of population. And then that factor is used as one-third of the overall operating factors or of, of expenses.
And maybe this is just me being super pedantic, but all it says is it's based on equalized value for each municipality divided by the total, which is great. Then it says it's also based on the three-year average calculated population, but it doesn't say divided by the total population of the entire district. And then the same thing for the third one. And, you know, like I said, everybody knows what it means, but it's not stated explicitly.
Your point is noted.
I don't know whether it makes a difference. I wanted to point out. And then the other thing is, okay, so it says the Wisconsin Department of Administration Population Estimates, which sometimes differ by quite a bit from the U.S. Census. And does, so, is everybody okay that we're always using the DOA even during census years?
Yes, we had to use, we elected to use one factor so that there was consistency there. And yes, there are a variety of sources where we could get population estimates from. It would be, I, I don't, I don't begin to know how they each arrives, arrive at their respective estimates. But ultimately, I think, and Mayor Hulia can, can weigh in on this. I think the, the group, the municipalities, as we looked to identify the factors, we felt that it would be at least most appropriate in order to use it, one consistent factor to use the Wisconsin-based factor versus, you know, the federal factor on it.
You do have that every year.
Yeah.
And it's true. Sometimes you're looking for Fitchburg population and you Google and you have five different numbers. So, okay. Any other question, comment? Okay. All those in favor of, do I need, no. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-0-32, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Okay. Next, we move to item 11. It's new business.
R 220-25, granting underground electric easement on Lot 20 of the second addition to Fitchburg Research Park for the police services facility.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
We have to give MG&E easement to bring the electric service into the, into the facility. That's what this is about.
Okay. Any question? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash 220 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one. I don't know. Who's doing this one?
I'll move approval of resolution R 23025, a resolution appointing election inspectors for years 2026 to 2027.
Second.
Okay. So what is this?
Tracy.
Tracy?
I'll cover this one. So the deadline for political parties to submit nominees for election inspectors was November 30th of 2025. Names have been provided by both Democratic and Republican parties and have been added as required by state statute 7.30 parent four, parent B. In addition to these nominations, the mayor is responsible for nominating no later than the last council meeting in December, a list of qualified election officials. The city has 221 trained election inspectors and 16 trained chief inspectors. This is something that is required every couple of years in advance of elections. And I believe when I click on the supporting document, it shows a list of those election inspectors as well as chief inspectors there. Anything you want to add at all, Tracy?
No. Okay. Any question, comment? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R dash 230-25, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R 23825, resolution in support of Ross Family Rentals LLC, application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, WEDC, for a community development investment grant, CDI.
Second.
This is a, oh, Finance approved. This is, a property has been purchased at Ochala and Fish Hatchery. It's for a permanent replacement of the UPS store. I mean, that UPS store is still there for now, but it will be eventually replaced by, by something that would be more permanent. Right now, that current facility there is very old and the preferred thing for the city would be to actually completely replace that building and create something that's longer term, potentially with housing, that developer is willing to look into that. They are going to apply to the WEDC for a, for a CDI grant. They need an indication through the form of resolution from the city saying that we support the project to help them move forward with it. So this is really just in support of their application.
Any question, comment? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash 238-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one. Thank you. Oh, Joyce. Bye, Joyce.
I move approval of resolution R 241. I move approval of resolution R 24125, approving purchase of police squad.
Second.
Finance approved this. There was a, one of the police vehicles got in an accident on November 14th, 2025, and no one was hurt. The insurance said the vehicle was a total loss. Insurance will cover the replacement, might less the deductible, oh, and, and the damaged equipment within the vehicle. There is a current vehicle that we can purchase from Ewald Automotive, a squad car, and they will hold their vehicle for us. So if we approve this tonight, it can be delivered to the city right away.
Okay. Any question, comment? Yes.
I just was going to ask about equipment. Alder Gerhart, I think you mentioned it a little bit. I didn't see a ton on that, that what's in front of us, kind of like what we just did for the fire department. So I was just curious how much of the equipment we may have to replace as well.
The total, the car is totaled.
Yeah, the car is totaled. I don't know to what extent some of the emergency equipment is, has been fully assessed as what all needs to be replaced. It is quite possible that you'll see another resolution that would be requested in order to fully equip the car, depending upon the dollar amount that's needed for that. But I know that the department was in need to get this car replaced pretty quickly and they were fortunate to find one on a lot nearby. So they wanted to at least get the, the vehicle in hand while they could.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? So all those in favor of resolution R dash 241-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So next we move to Alder District Report. So I will start with, I will start with District One and I will ask you a question.
So my, my only report on District One is?
No, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, okay. You have a question. Okay.
The question will be.
Una pregunta, okay.
Una pregunta. What was the best thing that you think happened this year, you know, or accomplishments that you made to the city this year?
In our, in my district?
Yeah. In your district or the city? What, yeah?
Oh, in the city.
Or whatever, in your district, you have, you know.
In my, in my mind, in my mind, the Sain Road was.
Okay, good.
Was a highlight for me. I've worked on that a long time.
Okay, okay.
And the only, the only thing I'd report is just ask residents, keep your fire hydrants dug out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Anything else from your district? No? Joe, what about La Posada? Oh, Joe is going to report?
Joe talked about that, yeah. It was, it was nice event.
Yeah. You got to give me some time to think about that question, Hulia. No, pop quiz. Oh my God. I mean, it's not in our district, but seeing the hub open was fantastic. And I, I've gotten messages from residents telling me how excited their kids are to be in the playground and the pump track. So I love that. Also, I would say Youth Government Day and Bring Your Kid to Work Day were super fun. So I love that that's happening in our city. Yeah, there was an event on Saturday. It was called the La Posada. Posadas are kind of like Christmas carols with a religious background. They were, I, I believe they're Mexican in tradition. I didn't, I didn't grow up with them being Puerto Rican, but it was cool. There were, I would say, 150 people there, mostly from the neighborhood. And Mayor Hulia, Alder Dave, and then Madison Alder Yanet all showed up, as well as the Madison Mayor. So it was a lot of fun. There was some really good food. Took a couple tamales. And I love that that is a tradition. I think the organization that put it on is the, I'm going to get, botch their name, but they, they do like workers' rights, workers' justice. So shout out to them for organizing that.
Okay, thank you. District Two.
I'm going to say the, that I am glad that we are expanding transit within the city.
Okay.
And then in terms of an update here, just want to reiterate, the B-cycle bikes are nearly gone now. There's about a dozen left over in the Allied Drive area there, but they will be gone by the 15th. And just reminders that this Friday is Get Festive at Agora. And then Saturday is the Holiday Lights Tour up at the fire station. And McKee Farms Park ice rink is open.
So a fun note, Fitchburg was on the cover of the Wisconsin State Journal two times last week in a row. One was for the, the Traceway Drive Park, the former hub that will soon have a name, the Fitchburg Hub that will soon have a name. And then the, then the police facility was on the, the next day. So anyway, it's kind of crazy. I went and bought, I haven't bought a copy of the Wisconsin State Journal for a while, but I went and bought a couple of copies of the paper. So thanks for, for the, I know one of the journalists lived here in Fitchburg and was, I know, was at the, the ribbon cutting for the Traceway Drive Park. In terms of things that I'm proud of for this year, I think opening the Traceway Drive Park was a big deal. That's a beautiful facility and something I'm so excited about, especially since that was a very long time coming in terms of my tenure on the council, pretty much the entirety of my, of my time here. I think getting the sustainability plan done was something I'm very proud of, but something I've been passionate about and was fighting for, for pretty much all my years on council. So that was a pretty big moment. And then also I think the work that we've done on housing this year has been pretty impressive. Some of the initiatives that we finally put forward and also our move towards spending down that, that money to improve affordability was, is huge. My immediate family and some of my extended family were in town this weekend. We celebrate holidays on an off day. And so my brother and sister were staying with me and I took them on a tour of the city, which I hadn't really done. And they've been here a million times, but I never really did that. So I took them to City Hall and showed them the chambers. And we went through the library and took a photo with the giant skeleton, which was very fun. And then I took them to the, the hub park and they were just so blown away by the city and how great everything it was here. And it was just like, of course, obviously you want your family to be proud of you. So it was nice to have them be proud of the city that I, that I love so much and, and that they've never had a chance to live in themselves. And I did take them to the, the Traceway Drive Park and we were playing and wandering around. And my brother's an architect that works on a lot of public projects. And he was like, wow, this is, this is really an outstanding facility. Y'all should be so proud. And it was just nice to, we just live in a great city and it's, it's nice to hear that from an outside source. And my, my siblings would tell me the truth. So, you know, they're honest with me. So, but yeah, they were, they were really proud to see where we live. And we live in a beautiful city and I'm really proud of everybody and hope everyone has a, a wonderful holiday end of the year with their loved ones. And, and thanks to the Public Works crew for keeping us safe. I think, I still think we are the best snow removal in the region. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan.
All right. I'll start with my runner-up. I think getting the transit plan across the finish line and specific, not only the 65 and 75 all-day expansions, but also getting into the transit plan, future vision for rerouting the 65 to better serve the Limerick, Hartong Fields, and kind of that growing part of District Three and a sliver of District Four was something I've been working on since TTC that I've been, since I was on TTC before I was an Alder, that I'm really excited about. I think the thing that I would say is my number one, that really has stuck with me since very early on in my term here, is over, it was late spring, early summer, I was picking up trash in Southdale Park and was talking to some kids that kind of came up and said, hey, what's going on? And, you know, I was just talking to them a little bit and I got to tell them that you're getting a new playground equipment this fall. And just the look on their faces, it was like Christmas morning. And now being able to go in and see that equipment there and know that we have more coming up in 2026, that was something that's just, I, I've told this story before, but it has really just stuck with me as one of the things that I think I will carry with me for many, many years to come of the importance of the work that we do here and how one of the 250 resolutions and counting we got through this year, you know, we, this, these are the lives that we're impacting and the real consequences, positive effects of the work that we do here. So I think that's what I would have to say. Takes the cake, as I stare over at the cake that's sitting on the table in the corner of the room here. Other District Three updates, just wanted to welcome Art Pup, the mobile and now permanently housed on Ochala Drive, dog grooming business that we cut the ribbon on here recently. Also wanted to put on folks' radar, there is a neighborhood meeting this Thursday, December 11th, about a proposed development on Notre Dame Drive. That would be 24 single-family lots along Notre Dame Drive and Corey Hill Drive, both of which would be extended. It's just north or just south of the townhouses that were put in, just east of the Fahy Glen, it was that Waterford Glen area, and then just north of the Fahy Fields, kind of filling in that last, like, last parcel that's been. of filling in that last, like, last parcel that's been sitting, kind of the donut hole in the middle of that neighborhood. So that meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, December 11th at 5:00 PM in the Fitchburg Room at the Fitchburg Community Center, 5510 Lacy Road. And then I'd also wanted to just give a shout out to my Terravessa neighbors at the neighborhood meeting that I went to with them in September. One of the pieces of feedback we got was that the medians at the County Highway MM and Lacy Road intersection have been difficult to see around. There's been, people just miss it and they go down the wrong way. And was, saw another thing about that on Facebook recently. Brought that to city staff, who brought it to the county. And now there have been a couple adjustments made there this year, kind of directly responding to neighbor feedback. So just wanted to give a plug that, yes, your voice matters and, you know, bring these things forward and happy to be that conduit to bring about these small but important changes.
Cool. Thank you. So I just reiterate the, the neighborhood meeting that Logan mentioned, that'll be taking place tomorrow. And then I guess my highlight would be the, the Community Equity and Advocacy Committee being unanimously voted to be recognized as a Fitchburg committee. It was a little over a year-long process that we had some very good spirited and interesting conversations at times. But I appreciate everybody that started with the committee, even those individuals who had to leave for various reasons. Your contributions were important and look forward to our, we have our inaugural chair, Chris Peguero, who will be carrying that work forward. So just look forward to, to working with that group as we move forward and continue to make Fitchburg a vibrant community. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start with the not savvy part. So I attended the groundbreaking for Gigi's Playhouse, which was very cold, but extremely well-attended. And I'm really excited for them to come here. They seem just ecstatic and excited to be here, and it's just really great to see. So that's, that's going to be a great addition. I will also shout out Public Works for getting the snow, I mean, I live in a cul-de-sac, and our snow gets, our snow gets plowed so fast. And then they put it in a big pile in the middle of the cul-de-sac, and all the kids are very happy. So keep doing that. That's wonderful. And yeah, so just happy holidays. Enjoy the Agora Festival. My family will be there. I will not, but I hope everyone, I'm sorry to miss it this year, but I, my family will be there, and I hope everyone has fun there. It's going to be cold, so dress warmly.
No, but it's going to be a tent.
I heard there's going to be a tent with a warm, a warm tent. So. And my year, my daughter would kill me if I didn't say the best part of my year was the fact that we approved replacing Kids Crossing and McKee Farms Park. She asks me, I think, weekly when it's going, where she's going to get information on that. So that's good. And other than that, so my 2025, I started sitting up here. So that was a highlight for me. And I will just say that I just couldn't be more honored to sit with everyone else that sits up here. I couldn't ask for a more like dedicated, passionate group of people that sit up here. I mean, just everyone up here. And I just thank everyone for, for that. And it's just, it's an honor to sit up here. So thank you to all of you. And I will say the same for city staff, just talking to them on a daily basis and just emailing, just, again, just could not ask for a more dedicated group of people. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Jake, you're.
What's your highlight? I'm going to say my accomplishment is getting appointed to the council two weeks ago. But I would also reiterate a lot of thanks. I know I'm meeting with several of you folks this week, and I've had a number of you reach out to me and offer to make contacts and tell me to connect with different groups. And it means a lot to be welcomed with such open arms. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to continuing to learn from all of you.
Thank you. Okay. So, so announcement, I want to tell you that the insert for the property taxes bill is, you know, it was put together by city staff. So I think it's going to be, did you mention that when people call them, they should call? Did you, would you ask that? Okay. Because we are going to receive a lot of calls, especially the people living in District Two and in the Madison School District, because there's going to be a significant increase in, in the property taxes for the people living in the Madison School District. So, so I think we need to be prepared how to answer and how to, you know, refer out this to the Madison School District. Isn't it? Do you remember that or no?
Yeah, I think I know where you're headed with this conversation. And so I will point out on, on the city's website, under the Finance Department and the Tax and Credit section on the left-hand side in that little blue column, when you click on that, there's a whole lot of information. Thank you, Scott. Where you can see where I'm currently landed at, government departments, finance, tax, and credit information. So obviously, there's all kinds of information out there. It, it probably is helpful, Misty just informed me that she was at a professional association gathering, and there was conversation about this new change at the U.S. Postal Service. As a matter of fact, that you're no longer getting a postmark when you drop it off at the post office. You're getting the postmark that's dating it effectively at the distribution center. So that is an important note that you can see our Finance Department has already added into this site here. There's videos available on the site, breaking down how the tax bill works, tax payment FAQ video, other sorts of links and so forth to explain the credits. But what Mayor Aratafrada was mentioning is way at the bottom, I know there's a lot of information, but there is contacts that are listed here where folks can reach out to, whether it's locally based for the city, related to the tax bill with the treasurer or with our assessor. And then if you click on these other links, our Finance Department went out and got contact information from each of the tax jurisdictions. So you can at least go somewhere. It's my recollection that there should be somebody's contact information at this page, but it does not appear to be easily located. So we'll look to confirm that there is an ability to connect with these taxing jurisdictions. So it's a bit more clear, but I'm sure that this was at least immediately linked so that folks could go to those taxing jurisdictions and at least do a contact us if they were so inclined.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chad. So, so our next common council meeting will be January 13, 2026. Next committee of the whole meeting, January 28. Do you have a topic for the meeting, Gabriela?
Yeah. So we're going to, we invited a, a group to come talk about passive house technology, you know, doing like a real, like closed seal on a house, high insulation, other elements to make a home energy efficient naturally, passively. They'll be doing a presentation on that. And it's possible we may add something else, but that's the one thing that's confirmed.
Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn. Before I move, I want to say happy holiday. Feliz Fiesta, Feliz Ano Nuevo. Y por un mejor 2026, for a better 2026 to all of you. Thank you. That's it.
So moved. And thank you too.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting at, what the time is?
9:34.
9:34, say aye.
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 Any opposed, we are adjourned at 9:34. Gracias.